Thanks, Jody. So, for our audience, and there are speaker slips in the back of the room. Would ask that you go ahead and fill those out for items that you wish to speak to on the agenda. For our regular public comment period, we have public comment speaker slips for our regular public comment for items not on the agenda, for consent agenda, for our public hearing, and our business items. If there's an item that you can't speak to that's later on in the agenda and you want to speak to it at the regular public comment period, if you can just submit your speaker slip to our city clerk and just pencil that in on the comment part portion of that, that'd be very helpful as she organizes those. That'd be great. And with that, we don't have any other recognition portions for the agenda. Close session report, no reportable actions. And with that, we'll move on to mayor and council members' reports and announcements. And Red, can you start us off?
Sure, thank you. I want to recognize tonight one of our special Morro Bay citizens, Larry Newland, for the special contribution that he has made to our community. Twenty-five years ago, Larry had a dream to build a maritime museum on the waterfront. He enlisted other people to share his dream, and for years and years, they persevered. They gathered artifacts, they got boats, they gathered public support, including the Salina Indian Community, they raised money, and they built a museum. Larry and his crew threw a big party two weekends ago to celebrate the grand opening of the Central Coast Maritime Museum. This was a big deal. We had proclamations from our mayor, Pro Tem, our District Two County Supervisor, and representatives from Assemblyman Jordan Cunningham and Congressman Salute Carbahal. So, thank you, Larry, for your vision and your perseverance and a beautiful addition to our waterfront. And I want to note that Recreation Services is starting up Astero Bay Youth Basketball, and we have an opportunity to sponsor teams to help them buy uniforms and supplies. So, for $135, which is tax deductible, you can sponsor a team, buy the uniforms, and your name, or the name of your business, or any name you choose, almost, will be put onto the team jerseys, and also, your name will go onto a league banner that is displayed during all of the games. So, you have from now till December 21st to take advantage of that. So, that's all.
All right, Red, thank you. Matt? John?
Thank you. I wanted to report on something with regard to the potential for off-wind windmills and wind energy that could potentially come to Morro Bay. The mayor and I sit on a subcommittee and have for the past two and a half years dealing with this, and I went to Sacramento on September the 17th, and the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management leases waters off-site with regard to the ocean. They've done this on the East Coast and are considering it as a result of Trident Castle Winds' request for this in California. The subcommittee has met a number of times, but there was a Hallmark meeting on September 17th. The committee represents the federal entities, and there are about 25 of those involved, from the Department of Defense, to the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, to the sanctuary organizations, to all of the cultural organizations, et cetera. A number of state agencies, including state parks, all of the management agencies, including the Coastal Commission, et cetera, are represented, and so, a very broad-based group of about 75 people that sit on this national committee. We got the email just on September 28th that the group had basically voted to move forward with what they called "The Call" for the development of offshore wind energy in California, principally at two sites: Humboldt County and Morro Bay. The exciting thing about this is, the draft call will appear in the Federal Register. We had an opportunity as committee members, the mayor and I, to review the draft Federal Register notice that will be appearing very shortly. We'll make sure that that gets announced to you and that you're aware of that and can comment as you see fit. In summary, the call by Boem, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, the feds invites the submission of information and nominations for commercial wind leases that would allow Alessi to propose the construction of a wind energy project offshore in California to develop one or more projects, as I said, designated Humboldt County and Morro Bay. The proposed sighting is approximately 20 to 25 miles offshore, invisible to the naked eye from the coast, very large capacity, and that call notice will be going out. It moves a process along. There will be a 100-day comment period. You'll hear more from council as mayor and I meet with regard to moving forward to engage the community. One of the things that I think the mayor wants to talk about is a recent agreement that Castle Trident Winds has entered into with the local fishing agency.
I'll go ahead and, can I cover that after Marlese is done?
Sure. I don't have any announcements, so go ahead.
Okay, great. Thanks, thanks for that. So, to continue on with the subcommittee and the Castle Wind announcement, as subcommittee members, we've been contacted with, from Castle Wind. I've had some contact with a new interest that reached out to both myself, to, and the firm would be Magellan Wind. So, there's more than one entity that's interested in the offshore wind generation. So far, it's been Magellan Wind, Castle Wind, and Stad Oil. Oftentimes, as different entities or interests come to the city, it allows a subcommittee to, you know, have some contact with them. It doesn't discontinue or forbid, you know, them to contact anybody else on council, but it does allow some conduit and connection to go ahead and do that. And of course, this is a moment where we can go ahead and announce that and kind of update council on what we're doing. But as council member heading was also saying, council, Castle Wind did go through a tentative, I think MOU, with the fishermen, fishing organization at this point. There'll probably be some sort of-
Actually, a signed agreement.
Signed agreement?
As of Saturday.
Okay. So, they have a signed agreement, MOU, with our Morro Bay Commercial Fishing Organization and Port San Luis. That's significant because as Castle Wind was moving through this progress, process, it's important that our commercial fishermen and fishing women within Morro Bay have some sort of agreement and were able to work through this. So, there will be more to progress on this, and we just wanted to report out on that.
Just one final comment, that this, you'll have plenty of time as a community to give input on that, especially with the Federal Register notice. And secondarily, this for Morro Bay potentially means significant revenues, jobs, and significant economic recovery opportunities. And so, I, as a committee member, very excited and happy to announce that the organization has moved forward to move the call forward, which is the next step.
And part of the announcement with Castle Wind, there will be a public presentation Thursday night at the community center, and the time on that?
Six o'clock. It's a two-hour presentation that Castle Wind will make, showing the effect of a similar project on a similar-sized city in Europe. And it'll be question and answer. Great opportunity for all of us here in Morro Bay to ask our questions and find out more about the potential project.
Okay, great. Also, to conclude my remarks, I just wanted to say thanks to a few constituents. At our last council meeting during public comment, we had a couple constituents during public comment reach out, and I contacted Dan Sedley, Aaron Oaks, and Ken Vestrofeld in just in regards to some of the public comment, and just wanted to make and thank them all for taking the time to meet with me. And it's great that we have a connection during this time at public comment, during council meetings, to discuss or make comments on what's important. But I would also encourage folks, if there's time to have a conversation, you can reach out to council members and/or staff at any time. And I just, I shared one of my quotes that was, I learned early on from the League of California Cities, and it was by a panel, a panel at one of those conferences, and it was a city manager whose quote was, "Conversations are the oxygen to solutions." So, public comment is great, we always appreciate that, but if there's anything that need to be in more dialogue, would encourage folks to reach out to anyone of us on council for that. So, that concludes announcements at this point, and we can move on to presentations. We're going to start off with a presentation, pardon me? Mittman? Okay, thanks. All right, thanks, thanks for that. We're going to start out with a presentation from Morro Bay Open Space Alliance. It's an update on Cerito Peak. And Glenn Silaway. Welcome, Glenn, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, staff. I'm Glenn Silaway. I'm the chair of the Open Space Alliance, the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance. We started a process about a year and three months ago to raise funds to purchase Cerito Peak, AKA Eagle Rock, and I'm here tonight to report to you about that, as we agreed. To get started, I'd like to have a very brief video run. Jesse?
No video, no audio.
We'll do it in reverse order. We agreed, or you passed a decision in July 11th of 2017 to seek a conservancy group to purchase the Cerito Peak for $350,000. And the Board of the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance, several members of whom are here tonight, Joe Graffia and Nicole Dorfman among them, we agreed to take on this challenge. And so, we have begun fundraising. You may know some of the things we did. We have gotten nice donations from the residents on the peak and not on the peak. We've got some foundation money. We had a luminous concert presented by Kent Nagano, featuring his daughter Karen Kynagano, that I still get comments about. And by the way, thanks to Father Redd and Saint Tim's for helping us put that on there. Tremendous supporters of our community. This effort has reached $110,000 so far. We're not quite a third of the way there, a little over a third of the way gone in time, which will be July 1, 2020 by our count. So, we have work to do, but we do have plans to do that. We're engaged with foundations, corporations, individuals. Fall is appeal time, as you know, so we'll be appealing. And, are you ready, Jesse? Okay. So, going forward, we're going to be wanting to work with you and the city and all of the residents in town to help make this happen. We're dedicated to doing it, and we are working systematically to do it. So, any questions?
All right. Any questions from council? None? Thanks, Glenn, thank you very much. All right. And weren't able to do that tonight?
Yeah, because we're having another-
Okay, all right. I'm sorry we weren't able to do the brief video presentation at this time. We'll maybe, maybe get that another time. Sorry about that.
One last thing. And then- One last thing, since I didn't use all my time. Everybody, go to the back. Ms. Mimbose is back there waiting for you. You can see her back there. She's got one of our t-shirts on. Here's a couple little brochures, if you want to know more about Cerito Peak or the Open Space Alliance. Pick them up and take them home and send it back with a big check. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Glenn. All right. Well, with that, we've got three other presentations tonight. Our next one up will, we have a Fire Prevention Week proclamation, we have a Breast Cancer Awareness proclamation, and we have a Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. And so, just to ask if council, if we can go down to the podium, and we'll read off some proclamations to present. The first one, we'll ask our chief, Chief Knuckles, to present that proclamation to, and then for breast cancer awareness, I believe we're having the survivors that are here. And so, we'll start off with a Fire Prevention Week, Breast Cancer Awareness, and then Domestic Violence. I think that's Jenny Baltz from Rise, is that right? Okay. And so, we'll start off with Steve, and if council can go down, we'll start off with the first presentation and proclamations. Thanks. All right. Let's begin first. Thanks, there. All right. Thanks, chief. Last council meeting, we were presenting a proclamation as well, and these are times to celebrate and remember some important things in our community. This one in particular is a proclamation of the City Council, the City of Morro Bay, declaring October 7th through the 13th, 2018 as National Fire Prevention Week. Let me get this out. And recognizing the Morro Bay Fire Department's participation in the 2018 San Luis Obispo County Fire Chiefs Burn Relay on October 11, 2018, supporting the Alice Ann Roche Burn Foundation and Firefighters and School Education Program. So, if you'll all bear with me here, and I'll go ahead and read through this proclamation, and it tells the story, and then I'll present it to the chief, and you can have some comments for us as well. Thank you. So, "Whereas, the City of Morro Bay, California is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting in Morro Bay. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, home fires killed 2,735 people in the United States in 2016, according to the National Fire Prevention and Fire Departments in the United States responded to 352,000 home fires. And whereas, in the City of Morro Bay, on average, over 50% of homes do not have properly working smoke detectors. And 100% of all residential structure fires this year in the City of Morro Bay had no working smoke detectors. And whereas, almost three of every five home fire deaths resulted from fires with no working smoke alarms, Morro Bay's residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of home. And whereas, Morro Bay's residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, Morro Bay's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, fire residents, excuse me, Morro Bay's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme, 'Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware, Fire Can Happen Anywhere,' effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. And whereas, Morro Bay Fire Department personnel will participate in the San Luis Obispo County Fire Chiefs Burn Relay on October 11th, educating up to 8,000 school-aged children, and raise donation to send juvenile burn survivors to Alissa Ann Roche Burn Foundation Summers Camp. And whereas, the Morro Bay Fire Department will participate in partnership with the Alissa Ann Roche Burn Foundation in the Firefighters and Safety Education Program at Delmar Elementary, educating 500 children in fire safety and home escape plans. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of Morro Bay do hereby proclaim October 7 through the 13th, 2018, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this county and community, and urge all people of Morro Bay to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Morro Bay's Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2018. Chief Knuckles, this is a proclamation presented to you, and I'm sure you have some remarks. Thanks very much for your service.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, smoke detectors, it's so important that the smoke detectors can save lives. And in our community, we are recognizing over 50% of our homes have, do not have working smoke detectors. And the major fires that we've had so far this year, we had zero working smoke detectors. And that just causes fatalities. Our partnership with the Alicia Ann Roche Burn Foundation with raising money for children to go to burn survivor camp is one factor, but also, we, it's the second year we're participating in a firefighter and school education program, where there's pre-test and post-test to evaluate the learnability of the children, but also to change the program for social demographics in each community, and we've got some positive results from that. Our burn relay, we're going to be in Morro Bay at 12:50 on Thursday. There'll be about eight engines from different agencies coming to Delmar Elementary. Please, if we walk and come down, we're going to be at the basketball courts. All the kids will be there in one shot, and you'll have eight different fire departments there. Thank you so much.
Next, as I get organized here, Dana, thanks for your help on all these. Thank you. Next, this is a proclamation of the City Council of City of Morro Bay declaring October 2018 Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and honoring the Central Coast Survivors Dragon Boat Team. And I'd like to invite them up, if they could, if they would be so inclined to come up and join us for this presentation. Thank you all for coming, and I'll go ahead and read through this proclamation, and then there may be a few words from you as well. "Whereas, the City of Morro Bay is committed to raising awareness about breast cancer and the impact it has on our loved ones, friends, colleagues, and community members. And whereas, thousands of men and women in the country are diagnosed with breast cancer each year. And whereas, a cancer diagnosis is a life-changing, is a life-changing, and survivors face long-term and life-limiting effects of the illness and its treatments, including physical, emotional, psychosocial, legal, and financial issues. And whereas, the Central Coast Survivors Dragon Boat Team, a program of the Central Coast Dragon Boat Association, was founded in 2007 and has over 100 participants, composed of both cancer survivors and supporters, most of whom are breast cancer survivors. And whereas, the Central Coast Survivors Dragon Boat Team, through their programs, promote health and well-being for all cancer survivors and their loved ones, while enjoying the sport of dragon boating in the Astero Bay. And whereas, the Central Coast Survivors Dragon Boat Team has been a goodwill ambassador for the Central Coast of California and the City of Morro Bay by hosting an invitational dragon boat festival in Morro Bay in 2007, traveling to compete in dragon boat festivals around the world, including Vancouver, Canada, and Shiged-
Shiged.
Thank you. Hungary, and hosting Team USA Club Crew Camp and Tryouts in October 2018. And whereas, several Central Coast Survivor Dragon Boaters are currently facing grave cancer challenges. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the City Council of the City of Morro Bay does hereby proclaim October 2018 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and recognizes the important impact that the Central Coast Survivors Dragon Boat Team has on cancer survivors and supporters in our community. Thank you for all your service, and we should give them a round of applause and invite them up for a few words. Is there anyone? This is for you all, and I'll just turn this around if you have some more.
Thank you very much. I'm Miki Gilman. I'm the president and CEO of the Central Coast Dragon Boat Association. We are very deeply grateful to the council, but all of Morro Bay, the whole community for supporting us the way you do. It's really a good feeling. I wanted to call attention to the fact that we have about six of our paddlers right now who are facing some very severe cancer challenges, and we hold them in our hearts all the time, but especially when we're on the water. And wanted to let everybody know that being on the water is very healing for us and very healthy, and we know that we're doing something very good for our bodies, and hope, we hope that we're keeping cancer away. We also want to invite all of you to come down and try it one of these days. You might like it. And we're hoping that next fall, we'll be able to have an invitational festival again. And wanted to call attention to the fact that at the end of this month, the last weekend of this month, is the Athlete Evaluation Camp. That's going to be held Friday, Saturday, and Sunday here for people to try out for Team USA. They will be going to Thailand to compete there. I think it's in August of next year. Come on out and root us on. Thank you.
I want to just shout out to the harbor department. They help us out all the time. Usually, we're at Subsea Tours Dock, but every once in a while, the tall ships are there or something. And the harbor patrol, Eric, thank you, is so flexible and willing to work with us to house the boat and take care of us too. So, thank you.
Our last proclamation is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay declaring October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we have with us Jenny Baltz from Rise. And Jenny, thanks for coming. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and you can have some words with us for us as well. "Whereas, Domestic Violence Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in Morro Bay. And whereas, domestic violence continues to be a major national public health problem, affecting one in three women, with an estimated 10 million children witnessing domestic violence in their own homes each year. And whereas, among families, domestic violence is the third-leading cause of homelessness. And whereas, children exposed to domestic violence often experience long-term consequences, including difficulty at school, substance abuse, and serious adult health problems. And whereas, the marginalization of certain groups in society, including undocumented individuals, transgender gender individuals, and those living with disabilities, increases with their vulnerability to intimate partner violence. And whereas, Rise continues to provide a safe environment to those affected by domestic violence with crisis intervention, counseling, education, legal services, and emergency safe housing with the help of dedicated volunteers and professionals. And whereas, Rise has provided service to more than 1,000 clients in the last year, including more than 5,000 collective nights provided for shelter clients, and more than 2,000 hours of counseling. And whereas, the City of Morro Bay strongly supports the efforts of Rise, how every segment of our society can work together to better address intimate partner violence, and how to help survivors connect with services. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the Morro Bay City Council does hereby proclaim October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Morro Bay." Jenny, thanks very much, and we have this proclamation for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to Mayor Irons and the City Council for this proclamation. My name is Jenny Baltz- My name is Jenny Baltis, and I am a client advocate for Rise. Rise is a nonprofit that serves survivors of sexual and intimate partner violence and their loved ones. We are guided by the idea that people have the basic human right to live free of sexual and intimate partner violence. Through collaboration, alliance-building, and access to safe, reliable services, we work towards creating societal change and eliminating intimate partner violence from Slow County. Last year, Rise provided 2,200 hours of therapy and 5,200 days of emergency shelter to local clients, among other services. Despite these large numbers, there is still a great need for our services. Rise's two emergency shelters are often at capacity, with open rooms filled within 24 to 48 hours. This past year, Rise's waitlist for therapy has grown to over 150 individuals. We are grateful for continued community support, awareness, and collaboration, which helps us grow to meet these needs. And these numbers also serve as a reminder that gender-based violence still exists prominently in our community, and our work is not done. Domestic violence, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and this year is focused on the idea that change and growth can start with one thing. One person's actions may feel insignificant, but together, a community's collective one thing can lead to real social transformation. We hope this month inspires our Morro Bay community to search for their one thing and get involved in and to join us in eliminating intimate partner violence from our community. Before I go, I would like to thank and acknowledge our staff, volunteers, and Board of Directors for all of the hard work they do in an effort to end sexual assault in our community and domestic violence in our community. They completely dedicated their work, and I'm honored to work with such a compassionate group of people. But most importantly, Domestic Violence Awareness Month is about honoring victims, whether they've told their story or not. So, thank you for joining us in raising awareness, honoring local victims, and doing one thing to show that intimate partner violence has no place in our community.
I just want to say thanks to all those that came tonight, and specifically for the proclamations that were presented. Dana, thanks for always helping us put these together. And thanks, council, for, you know, always marching down to the podium to, it's always a story, the proclamations, that tell the tale of different things, whether it's the survivors, breast cancer awareness, or our firefighters. So, I just want to, Chief, thanks again for that, and all of those who came. These proclamations are a different side of a city council meeting as we, as we move to the next part of our council meeting to discuss business, but I just thought I'd highlight the importance of the proclamations and the stories that are told when we do that. So, thanks. Next up, as always, when we start with a public comment, we do have a business spot that we start off, and I'd like to invite Jorge Melones. And he's going to come up and tell us a little bit about his restaurant here in Morro Bay, and just want to say welcome.
Thank you very much, Honorable Counsel, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, staff, and the public. My name is Jorge Milanes. I do own Thai Bounty. I've been here nine years. I just celebrated on the Fourth of July. And wanted just to tell you a little bit about Thai Bounty and my new restaurant that I'm doing out of the same, under the same roof. I like to think it's a one-home, two-great cuisines, and that's Milanesque Cuban food. Just a little bit about Thai Bounty. You know, I started in the little boat building, we called it, which sadly, I just read recently that is not to be anymore. Mark took over the lease from me. Anyway, it was a great spot. I kind of feel it's kind of the crib or the birth of where Thai Bounty began. But with that said, been doing, again, the Thai food for nine years. It's been a great experience, but I've been wanting to bring Cuban food to the area for some time now, and this year was the year. So, with that, Milanes started up in June. I do all Cuban food. It's going very good, been getting a great response. And, yeah, looking forward to some up-and-coming events. We're expanding, a few of the things we're going to do is expand our hours. We're looking to open for breakfast. And then with that, possibly into even a Friday and Saturday late-night cafe, again featuring Cuban and Thai food. Well, I started Milanes as a lunchtime venture. I've had such a great response, people coming in the evenings. Now we're doing dinner, too. So, I wanted to get that word out there. It's not just a lunchtime thing anymore. The other items, the Thai Bounty, I am looking to expand on that menu a little bit more. And with the breakfast, to turn it into somewhat of a noodle house. So, my aim's to have, you know, somewhat of an international feel there. So, it's, again, a one-home, two-great cuisines, international. And I look around the room, and I actually see some familiar faces, which makes me feel good. So, with that, I want to thank you for this opportunity. A special thanks to Jan Goldman for giving me this opportunity and the invitation to come up here and share a little bit of what I've been doing for a while now. Thank you very much.
Jorge, thanks very much. Welcome. Appreciate everything. And with that, Jan organizes all the business spots, so just a shout-out there. And as we start off with public comment, I'll go through the speaker slips. First up, we have Rigmore for public comment. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council and staff. My name is Rigmore, Morro Bay. I did my pink today, but I did forget my reading glasses, so let's hope for the best. Not too much to comment on, but since I've been in the dark the last two months, I wanted to say how happy I am that the issue over the sewer plant is finally settled, and we may not have to argue about that anymore. A few people think that I offended our city manager last time I was here, and if, in fact, I did, I profusely apologize to him. Although, I think he's a big enough man to know where I was coming from. Then, for those residents out there who did not heed Dr. Heading's warning, like me, to get shingle shots, go and get it. Since I had not even had a cold since 1984, of course, I did not need any vaccine. Well, I became terribly ill, and my grandson came down and dragged me around to four different doctors every fourth day, as I was just getting worse and worse. Finally, after about three weeks, he got me an appointment with a specialist. This is after I've had a C scan, I mean, some kind of a scan and everything else, at a specialist in San Luis Obispo, who just took one look at my swollen glute-together eye, my feverish, swollen, and scabbed half-face and half-sculpt, and said, "Have you ever heard about shingles? You are in full bloom." That was a month ago, and I'm still not totally well, so please, everyone, get the shot. It is the worst pain I've ever had. Thank you.
Thanks, Rigmore. Next up, John Elliott.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council staff. I'm here tonight, John Elliott, here tonight representing Morro Bay Trick or Treat Committee. Hard to believe, but this will be our fifth annual Morro Bay Trick or Treat event downtown Morro Bay. I'm here tonight to ask for business participation. If you're a business organization in the downtown area, you can be on the map. If you're out of the downtown area, we have a closed-off section below Morro Bay, on Main Street, below Morro Bay Boulevard, where you can come and bring a tent or a table and set up and hand out treats to the kids. It's a great opportunity for you to get your face in front of kids and their families and make them feel good about your business. The deadline to be on the map this year, we have, is October 15th. So, if you could email info@morrochamber.org as soon as possible, we can get you on the map. You will expect about 400 to 500 kids. When we first started, it was a couple hundred, but nowadays, last year, I think it was around 400, 450 kids. So, basically, they're families, and kids will be walking all over the downtown area. The event takes place on Halloween, October 31st, from 3:00 to 5:30. There's a Facebook page set up, on the city's Facebook page. And I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and the Visitor Center for calling last year's participants. So far, we have 79 businesses participating on the map. And I'll probably be back in two weeks just to promote the event again, but thank you very much.
All right, John. Thank you. Thanks for all that. Next up, Erica Crawford, and then Ken Bestrowfeld.
Good evening. I'll keep it brief tonight. Erica Crawford with the Chamber. Thanks for having me, Honorable Mayor, council, and staff. Just a couple of announcements. We do have that 4MB Business Assistance and Outreach Program that is ongoing. So, we're doing a focus group tomorrow with Scott Graham. We'll be in the Quintana Business District. We did call all of the businesses in Quintana to invite them to join us at 8:30 to 9:30 at Forever State Stoked Art Gallery. And then we are doing a workshop. You can see here, we're partnering with various service providers for solopreneurship and entrepreneurship training. This is a partnership with SCORE, so they'll be coming in. We do film these and livestream them on Facebook, so if people cannot attend physically these workshops, they are always available. They're actually housed, every single one we've done so far, on the Chamber's Facebook page. And then we get social on 10/17 at D'Stazio. So, Ken McMillan will be hosting a Chamber Mixer. If you're not currently a Chamber member, grab a Chamber member friend and ask to be a guest and come on down. And then finally, we do have our Board Chamber election, which is closing at 11:00 p.m. today. So, we've got five candidates. Jane Engel Allen from Allen Insurance, Amber Clark from the Allen Hotel Group, Tim Cowan from Pizza Port, Jeff Echols from Morro Bay House of Jerky, and Stephen Peck from Peck Planning are all on the ballot, and our members will be choosing four of those five. And we'll be back next meeting, I think, for a full report on the 4MB and everything else, Visitor Center. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Erica. Ken Bestrowfeld, welcome.
Thank you, Ken Bestrowfeld, Mayor, excuse me, citizen of Morro Bay. As you know, some of the, the last council meeting, I spoke to you about the police department, and I think I used the words of lack of respect because of what we are having, the situation there with the police department, where we're understaffed and underpaid. And I, for the first time in all the years, and I usually speak once a year about the police department, Mayor Irons reached out to me this past weekend, and we had a discussion. And I really thank him for reaching out to me. I feel that when you come to a council meeting, you are reaching out to everyone that's here and don't have to make an individual commitment to that. I don't think we came to any conclusion why we're understaffed and why we're underpaid. As I told you, I think it's now about three weeks ago where we had a disturbance where two officers arrived on scene, and the person took them on in a fight, called for backup, and one of the agencies, it took 14 minutes to come here. We had two officers on this past Saturday. We had a attempted homicide, I believe that's what it's called. I don't know too much about it yet because it's still under investigation. We had two officers on scene, one taking, trying to take care of the person who was assaulted, and had to go look for the other suspect. You don't know whether that guy, or person, excuse me, had guns. AK-47 says, "So, you guys will be used now." Two officers on duty. It's time the citizens of Morro Bay thought about what we need to have done for the safety. Part of my reason for coming up here is not because of the upcoming election, but because I've just recently found out that Measure Q money, which I was a member of, was to go for safety. And each year, the police department is given less and less for that. There needs to be a reason. Yesterday, another incident happened where a person wanted to take on a police officer Would any of you do that? Or are we to say, "The police officer, that's your job to fight people, to be spit upon, to have to clean up feces in the back of a police car or vomit?" These people need to be respected. I'm not talking about you trying to relate to other agencies. I'm talking about our police department and the City of Morro Bay. I'm asking the citizens of this community to ask, all those people who they vote for, to ask them about this. Why are we understaffed for the safety? Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ken.
I'm Cynthia Hawley, on behalf of the Morro Bay Action Team. At the Proposition 218 Rate Increase Hearing, Mr. Heading made the claim that, quote, "The city has gone out of its way to be transparent, to define a process that is best practice by the League of Cities."
Dana, could you pause the timer for a minute? I just want to allow you appropriate time, and so just ask, as we should for all of our meetings, if you can address council and not any one individual person. I would appreciate that.
I am addressing the council. I was explaining what happened.
Okay. Thank you. If you can reset the time for them, I appreciate that. Thanks.
The statement was not true. In a paper produced by the League of California Cities on, quote, "The legal underpinnings of home rule and other aspects of preserving local control," unquote, the legal, the league analysis states that, "While deference used to be given to local jurisdictions, quote, 'local jurisdictions must now comply with the voter approval requirements of Proposition 13 and Proposition 218, as well as other provisions of law in order to adopt local taxes, fees, and assessments.'" "All these procedural requirements and substantive standards are established by state law, removed from the potential for local control. The criteria for a valid protest is more than procedural, it's a substantive standard. Established by state law, setting out what information must be included in a valid rate increase protest, and under state law, a rate increase protest is valid that does not have a date." So, the process, this is, this is what the cities, the League of California Cities' best process is. There is no local control there. Mr. Heading did not speak the truth, and I'd like you to know...
As you're, as you're calling out any individual council member, if you would please address the council as a whole instead of calling out any individual, I would appreciate that. That's how we have it in the, in the comment section of this procedurally. I'd appreciate it. Thank you. If you would continue.
I was describing something, and I'm describing something that's true, and the whole council did not say that. I think you're misleading on that, on that rule.
If you can, thank you.
The Morro Bay Action Team supports John Weiss for mayor.
Thank you. Next up, Bob Kellner.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, staff, Morro Bay citizens...
Mayor, Council, staff, Morro Bay citizens, my name is Bob Keller, resident of Morro Bay. Yeah, I know it's Cancer Month. I forgot my pink. But I support Cancer Week and all the survivors for all they do. Maybe since I forgot my pink, if I blush, I'll turn pink. I'm here to give kudos to our Public Director for putting the stripes, the pedestrian stripes, on Main Street going into Highway 1, because it's used quite often. It's getting busier all the time. I see people walking, their dogs, the babies with strollers. They all go through that area, and it's very busy. So I don't know how Rob did it, but we've been trying to get stripes there for a long time. But I know it's Cal Trans jurisdiction, but I think it's very helpful now that we have the stripes. Secondly, I love the meter reader that has been put out on Quintana and Main Street. It slows traffic down because people see that, and they slow down, they put their brake lights on, and it makes it safer for our intersection because that's a busy intersection. We have so many inlets and outlets in that area. We have Highway 1 coming in and out, north and south, under the overpass, and that gets pretty busy, especially when you have tourists, a lot of tourists in town. So I give kudos to Robert, trying to keep that traffic control under control and bringing a lot of safety to that area, especially for the Harbor Trackfront off of Ratcliffe. So I think that's about all I can say. Well, lastly, I have one thing, too, that I notice a lot of people cross over from Lemus to the bike trail and the walk trail, and that's nothing that maybe they can work on. And I see people stop there, and traffic doesn't know where to go, or the bikes and walkers don't know how to cross. So that might be another possibility to do a safe crossing from Lemus Ranch to the bike and pedestrian walkway. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Aaron Oaks, next up.
Good evening, Council and staff. My name is Aaron Oaks of Save Morro Bay, but tonight I'll be speaking as myself, as a Morro Bay resident. And before I start my comments, I would like to express my support for Cynthia Hawley. I felt that a certain council member, clearly I can't address them by name, was very rude, and his comments were inappropriate, and rudely interrupted her comments when that is not what is listed in the rules of the meeting agenda. When you're talking about addressing a council member, it's as if I'm speaking to one of you individually, not as council as a whole. She was just reading from the public records, so I'd like to clarify that. I mean, if I was behind the dais, I would let her speak because she's owed that right for all the hours she spent performing a public service for this community. Now, earlier, one of the council members discussed meeting with me, and, you know, I appreciate him reaching out to me. He was very forward, wanted me to meet with him and discuss a couple of these issues. And he talked about how important it is to have a conversation, and I agree, but it's also important to listen. This council person said to me in the meeting, "Well, over the past six months, you've gotten really angry. Why?" As if my tone mattered more than the substance of my words. And so I know how a lot of women feel, you know, in the light of what's happened in the Kavanaugh, you know, the confirmation hearings, how a lot of women feel when they're told, when they have concerns that they're being hysterical or too emotional. So I thought that was very telling. So I don't feel like my concerns and the people I represent and the people I speak to, I don't feel their concerns are being listened to because all the council members hear, they just hear noise. And for the past six months, you know, I've tried to be civil, I've tried to be calm. There are a couple of times I admit I've raised my voice, and I cooled down a bit, but I'm not angry. I'm just disappointed in how the council has treated people, how one council member in particular continues to personally attack me from behind the dais, as Mr. Sedley discussed at the last City Council meeting that I wasn't able to attend. And I thought it was inappropriate, so...
Thanks, Aaron.
Fix it.
Thank you. Steve Stevens.
Hi, Steve Stevens. I also support Cynthia Hawley. I think it's important to allow the public a little leeway, and it's really interesting to me how this is done in a very selective manner. I don't think it's really necessary. I think it's just a matter of taking a deep breath and perhaps just letting it go for a moment, because I don't necessarily think that you, as a council, do want to stifle public comment. I think you generally do want to hear, but I think at times, that little passionate button can be touched, and I'm appreciative that sometimes that can be a little sensitive, so I just wanted to say that. The other thing that I'm concerned about, and I'll try to make this concise, I was especially concerned about the city taking seriously the sale of public property and avoiding even the appearances of conflict and self-serving actions. In the case of a piece of property that the city of Morro Bay has owned, the previous city attorney deemed it prudent to protect public interest by ordering an appraisal in a case where there was a representation, dual representation. Subsequently, when the, three years later, the city attorney deemed it appropriate to use a one-year-old broker opinion price, opinion letter in a matter where the city actually is carrying back a note originating a loan. So I just think it's important to take into account in future sales that an appraisal is appropriate in that kind of a situation. I just want to note one other thing, the Realtor Code of Ethics, Article 111, 11-1, BPOs may not be used as a primary basis to determine the value of real property for purposes of loan origination of residential loan secured by a property. And I think it would be prudent if the city attorney take the public interests, note the public interest and use an appraisal and be as prudent as possible as the previous city attorney did. So just in the sale of public property, I just think it's important relative to even the appearance that it be done properly. And I am not in any way disparaging anybody on the council because I don't know exactly what the process was, but I'm sure that they took into account the opinion of the city attorney. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. With that, that concludes public comment for tonight. Thanks very much, and we'll move on to consent. I don't have any speaker slips for consent. We have one for consent. Thanks, Dana. So Cynthia Hawley for consent, Jesse Barone and Betty Winholz. So Cynthia, welcome.
My comment is on A5 or 4, which is the approval of residential design guidelines. And I'm, once again, a part of the general plan is being carved out as a separate item, something that should be covered at a hearing, a noticed public hearing, something that should be certified by the Coastal Commission is not. And it says here that the reason for it is, well, the reason for it is to simplify and make it easier to amend. And basically, that's a euphemism for, I'm sorry, allow greater ease in updating the guidelines. And that's a euphemism for sidestepping and evading the Coastal Commission certification and evading a public hearing. This is part of the general plan, and it even says in your resolution, "The interim residential design guidelines are necessary to implement the neighborhood compatibility policies found in the general plan and local coastal program." The implementing parts of the general plan, like the zoning ordinance, that's part of the general plan, and you're not allowed to amend it willy-nilly. For one thing, you only get so many amendments a year, and this is being pulled apart bit by bit, and this is not the first time that a general plan amendment has showed up on the consent agenda, and the effect of that is to shut the public out of the process.
Thanks, Cynthia. Next up, Jesse Barone. Welcome, Jesse.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Good evening, Morro Bay. Just wanted to speak to two things today. I would be remiss to not take Fire Prevention Week proclamation and not mention fire sprinklers. Fire sprinklers save lives. I get a lot of emails from NFPA all the time, and there was not a fatality in California in 2017 in homes that were sprinkled where the sprinkler system was active, was active. So that's my pitch. I really wanted to talk about item, the community choice aggregation. I really wanted to speak to that last week, and I, sorry, I couldn't stay till 11 o'clock or whatever time you guys got out of here. But I do have one concern. It did, in the fiscal impact, it states that San Luis Obispo is going to be on the hook for 80% of the risk, and Morro Bay 20%. And thinking about the way the sewer, the wharf has progressed up to now, I want to caution the council against entering into partnerships that are maybe not as great as they could be. So the fact that we're only, we're only getting 20% of the risk and they're taking 80%, seems to me that maybe something's off balance there. I don't know what it is. It seems a little weird to me, but I am in favor of community choice aggregation. It's never made sense to me that a public utility would be a for-profit company and have a monopoly on providing us energy. So please continue. Please be cognizant of entering into partnerships that are not in the best interest of our citizens, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jesse. Next up, Betty Winholz.
Betty Winholz, I too want to speak to A4, which is the design guidelines. I sent you an email earlier, and I just want to speak those publicly. I had three concerns and hope that you'll pull them and at least address them. One had to do with, I'm going to speak to them in reverse order, the housing height. It did not say what that is, and currently it's 25 feet, and so to leave it ambiguous, I think, is suspicious along the lines of what Ms. Hawley said earlier, that so you can put in whatever figure you want at whatever time. And currently, in our documents, it says 25 feet. And if you're going to change it to 30, it needs to be a public hearing, and it needs to be so stated so the public can respond to that, which leads to my second point, that this was not a public hearing. It is a planning document. In a sense, through no fault of their own, the Planning Commission did not get to have much input on it. It was always scheduled late at night, a couple of times it was, and one night it was postponed, and so I don't think there was a good chance for the public to participate in this document. And my third point is that all of the pictures in this document are for illustration, I understand that, but there's no illustration for Morro Bay. It's all from houses, from other kinds of communities, other kinds of towns, whether they're, you know, LA, San Francisco, or Carmel. And I think it's inappropriate to have a housing document, a design document, that does not have Morro Bay illustrations, and I think those need to be replaced. And while I have a second left, I'm going to reiterate that I think it's inappropriate for a person who's speaking to be interrupted, and I think that needs to be respected.
Thanks, Betty. With that, we'll conclude. Oh, Steve Stevens, I've just got your last speaker slip. Sorry about that, Steve. Thanks for putting that down.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Steve Stevens again, and I also wanted to concur. I think, I've tried to invest as much time as I can, as with everybody else who's got a family and try to get their bills paid and whatever, and so trying to be aware of everything that's going on in the city. Some of these, you know, meetings go on forever, and I appreciate that time you're investing, and yet at the same time, it makes it very, very difficult when things end up on a consent item instead of as a more deliberative process on the agenda. So I just would encourage that also, as the previous speakers suggested, and I appreciate very much that opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you. With that, we'll conclude public comment. Bring it back to council. Okay, so for consent, I'll pull item A4. Any other items to pull? None? Any more? None? Okay. We'll pull item, so I'll take a motion to approve all items on the agenda with the exception of item A4.
To move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Heading, second by Ms. McPherson, sorry, for that. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. Item A4, there was, looking to Mr. Graham for responses. Basically, what I got was the height, the public hearing part, the process that it came to us. Maybe you can describe how it was an interim, why it's on consent, the picture illustrations, and what was the other one? Public hearing? Yeah, if you can describe that.
Okay, so a little bit of history. I mean, the City Council initially adopted this document as an interim design guidelines back in 2015. You adopted them for a period of a year. Your Planning Commission worked for about 11 months on it, putting them together, and then subsequently, they were made, they were adopted for a period of a year, and then subsequent to that, the council adopted a second resolution in October of 2016, extending the period for 24 months. And we took a look at incorporating the design guidelines into the general plan and local coastal program because that process was underway. But in looking through it and, you know, having conversations with your general plan advisory committee and your planning commission, the decision was made to make them a separate standalone document. That's not uncommon. If you Google "design guidelines for communities," they'll come up all over the state of California and in other states, and it's a standard, it's a fairly common practice to have them as standalone documents versus incorporated into your general plan and LCPs, which is the reason why there's no public hearing, because it's not being incorporated into those. Your draft general plan and zoning ordinance does have policies related to design in them, as does the Downtown and Water Furniture Strategic Plan that was adopted by the City Council. Those also have design policies in it. So you will have some permanent ones, and those policies will be covered through public hearing processes for the general plan and zoning code updates. As for the specific issues raised by Ms. Winholz, she, the, she was referring to the glossary section for the height item, and she, in the email that she sent out, quoted a portion of it, the policy as it relates to the description for height. It reads in full that "The maximum allowed height of a structure is established by the zoning code utilizing an imaginary surface located at an allowed number of feet above and parallel to the existing grade." It doesn't have anything to do with increasing height to 30 feet. It also references that you will use the city zoning code to determine what the height is. The height is not 25 feet in all residential districts. The beach track, for example, it's lower. So it defaults to the zoning code for telling you what the standard is. And oftentimes, what you'd have in association with this, and the Planning Commission's discussed this over time, is putting in... this over time, is putting in exhibits to show kind of how you might measure height, as an example, you know, meaning you have a house that's located on a lot, and you have a dash line that goes up to the maximum height and notes that it's 25 feet. That's all that's referring to. Certainly, it could be something that we update moving forward if the council chooses to adopt it permanently, giving the directions to return with it as part of the design guidelines update, as part of the goal-setting process perhaps. What was the other item? Oh, there was a concern about when it was heard. We did take it before the planning commission back in August. It was, I think, heard about an hour and 20 minutes into that meeting, so it wasn't terribly late. Yeah, I covered the process that they, we went through in adopting the document.
Pictures and illustrations?
Oh, thank you. So pictures and illustrations. That was a topic of discussion that was had by the planning commission. There was initially a desire to have examples of houses in Morro Bay depicted in the document, but some of the document, and if you look at it, will note things that we don't want to see or that we would discourage. And the planning commission felt that it was inappropriate to put pictures of Morro Bay homes in there because those are residents that live here, and that would likely offend them if they saw their house as a picture of something that we didn't want. And the planning commission chose not to use those, but instead to use illustrative drawings that were just representative of the, of solutions to the issues they were trying to resolve. And so that's why we don't have pictures of Morro Bay homes in there as it relates to that. That was a conscious decision by the planning commission. I mean, the planning commission went through this at 11 meetings and spent a lot of time with it, and they do enjoy using the document. They use it regularly. They refer to it at almost every single planning commission meeting, so, yeah.
And so I just want to maybe respond on the public hearing portion of things, and just want to reiterate that and why it's coming back in the consent. I think I understand, and maybe the rest of the council may want to understand, but we've gone through, you know, it's been interim, we've gone into adopting this, but we do understand that when we go through the general plan LCP update, and that's adopted and then certified, there will actually be new languages in there, and can you speak to that?
Yeah, you have a design element in the draft general plan update, general plan LCP update, and you also have a draft zoning code policies that relate to design as well. So that will lead into and provide input to the update process for the guidelines. The guidelines are, having them standalone means they're not an ordinance and they're not the general plan, so there's no public hearing process required for those. You can simply adopt them through resolution, and that's sufficient. There's not a public hearing requirement for that. And like I mentioned earlier, this is a fairly common practice. You can Google "design guidelines for communities," and you'll see them all over, and they won't be part of a zoning code or a general plan. Oftentimes, they're used to implement some of those things. They're used as a tool, and that's what this is. When I first started here a little over four years ago, the first meeting that I attended was a large home over on Ridgeway. It was, neighborhood compatibility was at the forefront, and after we went through that process, a very painful process, I think, for the neighborhood over there, the direction was to develop design guidelines, and we spent almost a year doing that, and that's what these are. These stem from that process. And not only do you have these now, but you also have, you know, we're also updating general plan LCP, like I said, and we're putting design components into that as well. And you have design components, as I mentioned before, in your downtown and waterfront strategic plan. So I think in that four-plus-year period, we've added a lot of input related to design and neighborhood compatibility to address the concerns that were raised when I first got here. And so I think we've made good steps, and we're continuing to do that.
Okay, great. Any more questions?
I just have a follow-up question to ask, Scott. Could you explain the difference between design guidelines and what's going to be in the general plan, which I'm assuming that would supersede any design guidelines that you, and how do you use the design guidelines in your planning process?
So we have, in the current general plan and LCP, we have some reference to neighborhood compatibility, and these are, and the design guidelines are meant to sort of implement those policies. But they're guidelines. They're not hard and fast rules. They're not like a zoning code standard that says the maximum height is 25 feet, setback is five feet on the side, 10 in the rear, 20 in the front. Those you have to adhere to. There are specific requirements. Design guidelines really are put in place to, you know, to tell the story about what we want things to look like and to address concerns related to development proposals that are coming forward through the application processes, both administratively to staff and through the public hearing process to planning commission. And the planning commission identified these as being issues. They said, "We don't have the tools. Help us." And really, they helped themselves because this document, they rolled up their sleeves and basically went through it and developed it themselves. They went word by word through it, and so.
All right, thanks. Any other follow-up questions? Entertained a motion to approve item A4. It's moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Heding, second by Ms. McPherson. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. And just before we conclude the consent, I know we already adopted the CE, CCE on consent, but maybe we can just, can we do a quick response to the 20/80 split on the CCE and maybe speak to that comment, Scott? That would be helpful.
Yeah, the 80/20 breakdown essentially comes from the electricity load of the city of Slow versus the city of Morro Bay. That seemed to be pretty approximate to just the load that we carry versus what they carry. So it seemed like a logical split for the risk to fall under those similar percentages. So if it's $1 million that we're talking about, the city of Morro Bay would be responsible for $200,000 of that total $1 million potential risk, whereas the city of Slow would carry $800,000 of that. It seems like a logical and fair split of the risk.
Okay. All right, thanks. Unless there's any other questions or comments from council, I'd move on and close the consent. Okay? All right, we'll move on. We'll close consent, move on to our first item, public hearing for tonight, item B1. Item B1 is the adoption of resolution number 8218 approving concept plan condition use permit number UPO 509 for Harborwalk Plaza, 833 in Embarcadero, and extension of short-term lease agreement between City of Morro Bay and TLC Family Enterprise for lease site 87-88 and 87W-88W located at 83, excuse me, 833 in Embarcadero. And look for, Cynthia, are you going to be presenting this staff report?
Yes, I am.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Mr. Graham is going to be putting the presentation. It looks up onto the screen, this PowerPoint presentation. Yes, this is an approval request tonight for you for a concept conditional use permit. It also is a request for an extension of a short-term lease agreement between the applicant and the city for the lease site. So I'll go through the planning presentation, and then at the conclusion, I'll turn it over to our harbor director, Mr. Andersby. On the screen, you'll see the, excuse me, street image up there of the off-the-hook building located in the background. The vicinity map on the screen shows the building, which is currently located across the street from Centennial Plaza on the west side of the Embarcadero. This is also a city lease site, 87-88/87W-88W. The city lease site is located in the waterfront PD S4 zoning district and overlays, and it is also subject to the waterfront master plan. As required by city code, because the lease site is located in a planned development overlay, the project requires both concept and a precise plan approval of the conditional use permit. As a concept plan before you, the planning commission has reviewed the concept plan and forwarded a favorable recommendation to the city council for its review and approval. The city zoning code then requires precise plan approval of the CUP within one year of concept plan approval, which is typically after the Coastal Commission's approval of the coastal development permit. So this is the second of three city public hearings for the CUP. The project would demolish and reconstruct the existing off-the-hook building. The project is named Harborwalk Plaza, as you see in the project description, and it would reconstruct it as an approximate 8,000-square-foot building with two retail spaces located on the ground floor at the street side, three public restrooms, second floor, excuse me, three public restrooms, a restaurant space on the base side of the building, and then on the second floor, eight boutique hotel rooms. Oh, excuse me. And then, in addition on the screen there, the project also proposes installation of 10-foot base-side lateral access where none currently exists. Also proposes outdoor public seating. It redesigns the view corridor and children's play area, and then also reconstructs the existing side tide dock system. These are the development standards as presented to the planning commission. Project is subject to these standards and does comply with the development standards for this zone district. In addition, under parking, the applicant's project is compliant with the city's parking ordinance based on uses proposed for the site. No dedicated hotel parking spaces are included with this CUP request because the project complies based on its uses. And just to go back a slide here, just to point out, the building height is proposed at 25 feet. That is allowed for the waterfront master plan and PD overlay with a finding of significant public benefit. And then some later slides, I'll go through what the applicant is proposing in that regard. So as I stated, the planning commission reviewed this project as a concept plan. That hearing date was on August 21st, and the planning commission review centered on these six main topics on the screen. Planning commission discussed the proposed Harborwalk that is located adjacent to outdoor public seating, and whether outdoor seating could be seen as unintentionally viewed as private versus public. View corridor requirements, they discussed the proposed children's playground area, the sidewalk width on the Embarcadero street side, rooftop treatment, and proposed green features. That discussion concluded with two added conditions to the project. This is the first condition 19, which is in your resolution for your consideration. This condition states that "The outdoor table areas as shown on the site plan of the plans in your packet shall be delineated with differential paving material," and I'm just going to paraphrase this because this is a little long. But this is to address that concern about public versus private, and so the planning commission is requesting that that be differentiated with paving. And then also, those outdoor table seating areas are located both on the west side of the building, and then there is a outdoor seating area on the northwest side of the building. And I have a site plan in a moment I will show you. And then the next planning commission condition is number 20, and that is to require that the plans reduce the depth of the proposed planter adjacent to the sidewalk in order to allow for increased sidewalk width. The applicant is proposing eight-foot sidewalk, and the proposed planter is about two to three feet now, and likely with revised plans, we might see possible increase of width of one foot depending on viability of how wide that planter can be. Okay. Staff has also discussed this project with Coastal Commission staff, and they have, one of the concerns that they addressed or brought up with staff was also this concern about public seating outdoor and whether that could be public or private. They had suggested adding a condition or to require that there be no table setups or condiments or whatnot on that outdoor seating area. And as a matter of fact, last week, your planning commission considered the final precise plan approval for the House of Juju project at 945 Embarcadero and added this exact condition. And so considering that recent approval and recent conversation with Coastal Commission staff, staff is recommending an added condition 21. That is something that staff drafted today, so this is not a condition that the planning commission saw for the Harborwalk Plaza, but this is the exact wording that they adopted for the House of Juju project. And so staff's recommending the same language in order to be consistent for the both, of those two projects. Here is a slide of the site plan. So this depicts the locations of the proposed uses. As I said, the retail spaces would be located street side. You see that on the right side of the screen. And then restaurant would be base side. It does provide the required public view corridor. And I don't think, okay, here we go. So the required view corridor is that area there on the top of the screen. The rectangle area that is shaded gray is the location of the proposed children's area. And then the two smaller gray geometric shapes are the outdoor seating area. Project also proposes a yogurt shop to increase the family-friendly amenities adjacent to the children's area. And on the base side, that project shows 10 feet of base-side lateral access will be installed. And planning conditions 4 and 19, 4 and 19 in the resolution, do require maintaining the 10-foot area as well as delineating the different paving materials. So that's where you'll see that in your resolution. On the south side of the building, adjacent to the, one of the public restrooms, and I'll point out the locations here if I can. Okay, so here's one of the three. There's one on the south side, and the two there on the north. But next to the south bathroom is where the proposed trash enclosure is located. And then just to walk you through some additional informative slides here, here's a close-up of the image of the proposed Harborwalk area, and that shows in the gray shaded area, some outdoor seating area. This is outside of that 10-foot area. So they're proposing the minimum 10-foot of base-side lateral access. The outdoor seating area comprises about an additional five feet. So in total, there is 15 feet of public area. And so the red outlines that 10 feet of Harborwalk area. Here's a site plan of the second-floor hotel room layout. Hotel rooms will range in size from 284 to 450 square feet. Hotel check-in will be done in one of the first-floor retail spaces. There is a condition on the project that would require reservation of 25% of rooms to be available as low-cost visitor-serving accommodations pursuant to city's LCP policy requirements and coastal requirements. The planning condition 6 is the condition that speaks to that, which would require that hotel rates be determined by factoring in what 85% of average daily rate is for lodging facilities on both sides of the Embarcadero, or is otherwise approved by the coastal development permit, with some acknowledgement that they still have to go through the coastal development permit process. This is additional project description info. As stated in the beginning of the presentation, they are proposing to reconstruct the existing side tide dock system. That will be shifted northward approximately two to three feet. It will allow for better alignment to access that dock system. Currently, I believe you have to, you have to go to the lease site to the north and then loop around. And then I have a few slides here just depicting the elevations with some visual sims to follow. This is an image of the west elevation. And then the north side of the elevation, so this would be from the courtyard area. And this east elevation is the, is the street side elevation. And this was the rooftop and conceptual landscape slides that the planning commission saw. They are proposing approximately a little less than 400 square feet of landscaping. Most of that is proposed with the rooftop garden. And then here's a little bit of detail on that. And then the next few slides, you'll see the visual simulations existing and proposed. So this is the, an existing image of the street looking southwest, and then proposed. From this image, you can see the hotel balconies on the north side of the building. And here is a visual simulation from the rear. Currently, you see that the building projects out over the water, and there is no Harborwalk access. With the proposed simulation, this simulation does show now that building will have wraparound Harborwalk access. And then here's an additional simulation. This wasn't shown to the planning commission, but because the planning commission, one of their discussion points was, you know, what will the rooftop garden look like, and what will that roof scape look? And waterfront master plan does also talk about visual simulations from bluff-top views. So here, this is at the top of Centennial Plaza. So staff had asked for this to be provided to the city council. This is existing, and then proposed. Applicant has provided a color of materials. Applicant has provided a color of materials board. This was presented to planning commission. And this, as shown in the visual simulations, depicts some of those proposed treatments. The project plans do depict public access signs. And as you will note, council has previously conditioned projects to include identification of the Morro Bay Harbor Walks. So, the sign on the right is your first image of what that would look like. And we look forward to seeing that on other projects as well as they populate the harbor This was also discussed with planning commission. There is no eelgrass in two previous studies that was found west of this lease site, but they are subject to California eelgrass mitigation policy for, and standard city BMPs for marine mammal monitoring and biological monitoring. This is reflected in the planning conditions. Based on this review, project was deemed categorically exempt under CEQA for replacement and reconstruction of similar commercial structures. And this slide summarizes the project's offering of significant public benefit for that finding that is required in order to increase the height. These, excuse me, these numerous public benefits are shown on the slide. The project proposes to upgrade and expand the children's play area, provide three public restrooms on both sides of the building, provide for outdoor public seating, and ecological exhibits for public education, energy feature exhibits, provide amenities on the harbor walk, which is required, but the amenities themselves, which is the viewfinder telescope, providing enhanced views of more rock in the bay. And then the applicant is also proposing several different green building features to seek LE, excuse me, to seek LEED certification. Harbor Walk Plaza project is proposed to revitalize an existing underutilized building and add new hotel accommodations to the waterfront area, provide required bayside lateral access where none currently exists, and also provide additional public access amenities. The project was reviewed by planning commission, which has forwarded a favorable recommendation to city council for approval of the CUP. So, therefore, it is staff's recommendation, council adopt council resolution 82-18 with the added staff recommended planning condition 21, making necessary findings for approval of the concept plan, CUP UPO 509. That concludes my portion of the presentation. I'm going to turn it over to our harbor director for discussion of that lease agreement. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Council. I'd like to thank Ms. Jason for allowing me to piggyback onto her staff report. That was great. She did most of the work. So, as you know, this process came out of an RFP, a request for proposals process based on the lease site redevelopment that TLC won and was granted a consent of landowner for. Earlier this year in April, we awarded a short-term lease to TLC to get underway for this project and submit to planning for the full permitting process by no fault of TLC's own. They had, back, I'm sorry, August 31st was their deadline in the consent of landowner, the COL, by which they had to get through concept approval. By no fault of TLC's own, they did not make it by that date. The first planning commission hearing, as you heard, was August 21st. By all accounts, they actually got through the permitting process relatively quickly. In hindsight, we probably set that deadline a little too short. The consent of landowner provided for 55 days from concept approval to get a new lease in place. We can't inaugurate a new lease until basically the CEQA analysis is done and the concept approval is done. So, the COL provided for 55 days for that. That deadline would have been October 25th. So, the deadline on the existing interim lease is October 26th. Obviously, we need to extend these things out. We did do an extension on the consent of landowner, which was, authority was granted to the city manager to extend the deadline out till now to get through the concept approval. Since there's no city, second city council meeting in November and only one in December, the 11th is really the date that needs to, this interim lease needs to be extended to. 55 days from today is actually December 3rd, but going to the 11th is necessary to catch that council meeting on December 11th. Therefore, December 11th is the warranted date that we are recommending extending this interim lease to. The new lease, assuming approval of the concept here tonight, the new lease would be negotiated and put in place by December 11th. And it will incorporate all the other deadlines that are in the existing consent of landowner in terms of milestones and deadlines accordingly, and we would move forward on the new lease. As you know, the new lease, the consent of landowner has other milestones, proof of financial ability to pursue the project and other things. As I said, those will get incorporated into the new lease and the consent of landowner will basically disappear. So, we're recommending the council approve the extension of this lease, the interim lease, which does provide by mutual agreement of both parties to be extended. TLC has requested that extension, and that's what we're presenting here tonight.
All right, Eric, thanks. And now I remembered what December 11th date was when the city manager and I were looking at the agendas and looking out. And now I remember in the staff report, it had that date. That's what that was. So, was reminded for that. So, with the staff report, thanks for presenting that. We can go into questions. And it may be easier to just have the applicant come up and do their presentation, and then we may be able to ask questions all at once. How do you feel about that? Just go ahead and do that? Okay. Then if we can invite the applicants up to speak. Dana? Yeah, thanks.
Chris Parker, the architect on the project. And thank you, Cindy, for presenting the project. We're looking at the Harbor Walk Plaza, 833 Embarcadero. It's proposed to be mixed use with retail and a restaurant and a yogurt shop downstairs along with an eight-unit boutique hotel upstairs. The overall design, as she went through, incorporates a two-story structure incorporating metal roofing, cement siding, shingles and trim, along with vinyl windows and glass railings for deck partitions. The project is providing public benefits such as outdoor public seating, which you can see in the orange shaded areas, public restrooms, two of which would have direct access to the exterior of the building. Those are shaded in the green areas. A developed children's play area with a sea life theme, which is depicted in the purple And the client has been working with for the kids to help develop the climbing and play structures with art sculptures by Peter Hazel and amusement rides by Bestin Incorporated. The client will go a little more into detail on the play area when she has a chance to Some of the other public amenities deal with along the boardwalk, things such as a reverse periscope for looking down into the ocean, viewfinders, ecology exhibits, as well as we have been consulting with In Balance Green Consulting to achieve a LEED certification. And in doing that, we'll be utilizing things such as gray water storage and reuse to the toilets, solar system, along with some smart LED lighting controls to help reduce energy use, solar shading along the west facade and a little bit on the south facade there. That's depicted in the orange area. Along with some rooftop succulent garden boxes to help along with the screening of some of the kitchen equipment and just to break up the roof line as it's seen from Centennial Plaza. I'll give the client a chance to speak as well, and I want to just thank you for hearing the project tonight.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, staff, city watching. My name is Sharice Hanson. I'm from TLC Family Enterprises. I put together a little clip for everybody to watch. It's in reference to the public benefit portion of the project. It's missing its music. So much better with the music. Okay, so, thank you, Chris, for your explanation. The benefits are, main ones that I want to bullet tonight are the vertical view corridors. There'll be two of them on both sides of the building with clear paths opening up on each side. And I want you to notice the changes that we've already made since we took over the property in June, how we've really opened up and widened the area and really invited people to come back to the waterside, and we want to continue that in all aspects of the structure. A larger harbor walk. I know that it has a 10-foot lateral access that you noticed on the diagrams, but the public seating that we are going to have is going to be removable tables. And so, when it's not nice weather, they won't be there. And when we're closed, it won't be there. And so, that will allow more open area during morning walks and evening runs. And I've just noticed so many people who are doing that in the mornings and the evenings, and it's just really nice to have an unobstructed walkway and viewing area for them. We are also seeking, another bullet point is seeking LEED certification of silver or possibly better. The certification comes with many benefits besides that of the tenant and the environment. It also stimulates visitors that are seeking eco-conscious buildings and environments, and it would put us on the map of Morro Bay with LEED certification. A safe, exciting, innovative play area. Currently, looking across the street of the property right now, the area that's considered play area is not safe. We'll definitely make it an exciting, innovative play area with a lot of informative as well as fun activities for all family members to enjoy with kiosks and the periscope that were mentioned. There will be numerous public seating throughout the common areas. Another public benefit is the variety and affordable food options that will be present in the restaurant portion. The entire building will have local artisans and goods that will adorn the building, especially in the hotel rooms. The design of the building and the layout that we have put forth is always to most benefit the viewing and enjoyment of the bay, just by the way that we do the patios and just the positioning of all of the different items that we have on the building. There will be also gender-neutral bathrooms, which I think, and three of them, which I know are dearly needed because I get that question probably three times an hour, where's the bathroom? So, there will be plenty of opportunities for that as well as trash cans all throughout the property in three to four locations. Also, benefits for the tenants, because that's also something that benefits everybody, as well as that they will have affordable rents for food service that can benefit the tenants even when times are low tourism and make their entire year more capable of viability. Bad word, yeah. Anyway, lower energy costs with LEED certified amenities. Another bullet point is active atmosphere that attracts customers. Just the fact that there's so much to do in the area really gets people to want to stop and want to be a part of that area. The open-air dining and the versatile enclosure maximizes customers' enjoyment throughout the season. And further benefits will continue after completion. Even though it's not diagrammed on here, we have so many other thoughts that once we are up and running, that we would put money, more money towards more public benefit because public benefit really benefits us all in the long run, and it's what we would like to be a part of the community to bring. Thank you.
All right, Sharice, thanks. If you guys can just hang out there as we go through questions, we might be questions with staff and then questions for Chris and Sharice and everything. Thanks for that. Thanks for the presentation. So, with that, we'll start off with questions. And Marloes, do you want to start off with questions? And we'll just see how it plays out as far as questions for staff and question for the applicants as well, and we'll just all manage that together.
All right. Well, I think my first question is for staff. I just wanted to clarify, I think you may have said this in the presentation, Eric, but I just want to clarify that all of the other milestones do not change. The only change would occur, that would occur is this delaying the approval of this.
So, the consent, I had to think about it for a minute there. The consent of landowner had an August 31st deadline for getting through concept approval.
Right.
That deadline will now be keyed off of assuming approval tonight, October 9th. The next deadline is 55 days later, which is the December 3rd, for getting a lease in place. That lease, assuming we reach that milestone and get a lease in place by December 11th for council approval on the 11th, will incorporate all remaining deadlines that are in the consent of landowner and all the existing milestones and anything else the council may choose to put into the lease.
Right. So, it will not impact things like obtaining a coastal development permit? That part of the process isn't?
That part of the process still remains the same.
Okay.
They'll, I'm assuming, will key off the new lease if we inaugurate and execute that. It'll give the same sort of timelines that the consent of landowner already anticipates now to get through coastal commission and all the other stuff.
And it won't delay the start of the project or construction?
No.
Or any of the other milestones in the?
No. No, we're just moving forward in time because it took a little longer to get through concept.
Okay. And can you tell us where we're at or what the current status is of the financing for the project? Maybe the applicant can address that.
I will jump in and see if the applicant wishes to jump in as well. So, in order to obtain financing, the applicant, TLC, is going to need the long-term lease in place. Otherwise, all they're going to get is, you know, letters of interest. To really get the financing, they're going to need the long-term lease because that's what the lending institution's going to need for surety for the loan. So, until we get that in place, and once we get the lease in place, then they have 120 days to get that financing in place and get that approved by the city council.
Okay. And I guess these questions are for maybe Sharice and/or Chris. I seem to remember that, and I just wanted to clarify, that we originally were talking about a food court with three different restaurants, but on the plan itself, it says restaurant. Just to clarify, are you still talking about a food court idea and having different types of food available? I noticed you've got three kitchens on the plan.
On the previous question that you had, I just wanted to add that as far as our business plan model goes and timelines that we based our actions on that, we're meeting or exceeding and/or exceeding all of those expectations at this time financially. The other question about the cuisine court is, yes, it's actually still in there, and the diagram for the lower portion of the building still shows the three kitchens. And so, and that's what I also was talking about, benefits to tenants, is the way that we sectioned out the restaurant would help all small business owners be viable.
Right. So, it would be kind of like a buffet. They'd walk up and order and carry it to a table. Is that what you're thinking of?
Well, there's a lot of new, different styles that are working with the different ways that you can text in food and have actually tables and order from tables with little iPads. So, there's a lot of different ways in which they would handle it. I think at that time, we'll figure out how each one does, but I wouldn't say that all of them would have just a giant buffet with a tray. It's not going to be that style. It's going to be more innovative than that. But there will be three fast casual style places. So, it will not be a full service where a waiter takes the table and you're seated. That's part of the benefit of it being a public seating area is that That's part of the benefit of it being a public seating area is that if you want to sit there, you can sit there.
I just wanted to verify that you hadn't changed the concept.
No.
Because it looked, it looked different on the plan.
Okay, no.
Okay. And the same with the number of rooms, did you originally plan to have seven?
Yes, we increased it to one. Moved things around just because of feasibility and especially because of the 25% of the rooms. It made it more achievable to respond to coastal's request and also just generate funds.
Okay. And then the issue about parking, I realize that, I'm just curious to know where the hotel guests would be parking?
That is a hot-button issue as far as the other properties that are being impacted by this decision. It's a work in progress, it's something that we want to come out with the best solution. It's going to be different because everybody's getting on board at different stages, but we're all working towards, working together and having a system of valet where we have them parked in a different location and then when they come back to the valet, they can pick it up. They always have the opportunity, if there's a spot right in front, to take it. But eventually, that's the process of what we're going to do. I believe that it's going to be something that we talk a lot to coastal about as well.
Right, yeah, I'm concerned about it because I know that they have certain kind of requirements and restrictions and I'm just wondering how that impacts you.
Right, I sat in on Doug Reddigan's planning and the council meeting as well and I was very happy to hear one of the choices that you guys made, which was have designated parking and it was going to be at 3:00 PM to 10:00 AM and I wish that that was still a possibility. So ideally, that is what we would prefer. It would be financially a better outcome, but we're going to be going to coastal and talking with them about that and the possibilities of having anything of that nature.
Okay. And just in terms of your timeline, when would you expect to actually be doing demolition?
When?
Everything is based on coastal's response, this is the variable of which we are not...
So maybe I can have, we're in concept plan approval, so there's a permit and everything steps and I know we have a lot of conversation, but primarily concept plan approval.
Right.
Just trying to help facilitate this part of it. Not, I'm just, you know, just, I know there's a lot of questions that we think about. Thanks.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Any other, okay, thanks Marlese.
Thanks folks for your presentation, thanks staff. I just want to follow up on the parking issue too because obviously we were involved in Rosa's Landing and the parking issues there. Just for staff, do you foresee issues at coastal with regard to parking like we had as a city with that project and is there anything preemptively these folks might be able to do to make it easier, I guess?
So with Rosa's Landing project, as you're aware, we approved the project with the parking across the street in the city lot and coastal approved the coastal development permit prohibiting use of that parking lot for the facility. So we had to come up with another solution and that was to place the parking spaces at the, the city's parking lot at the corner of Market and Pacific. And so that's where, and in the not-too-distant future, we'll be coming back to council with a lease agreement for Mr. Reddigan to lease those spaces. That could be an option available to the applicant. They've expressed a desire to, you know, come to, you know, work through a solution, you know, that benefits them all as far as the valet service goes. The question is whether the valet service is even needed. We've had that conversation with Doug as well, you know, and honestly, the conversation that we've had with Doug centered on the likelihood of that being used much, probably folks, most of the time will be able to find a place to park and will probably park closer than this parking lot up on top of the bluff. So that's sort of still something that's in the works, but it was necessary, it was a necessary component of Mr. Reddigan's financing, I believe.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, which is why we had, was why we're working through the lease process with him, at least as the interim solution as to what, you know, might work from a parking standpoint. I think it'd be, hopefully as we move forward with this project and Mr. Reddigan's project and the Market Plaza projects, you know, as that comes forward, hopefully in the next year or so, we'll have a overall parking solution for all of those things as opposed to, you know, sort of these, I would call them interim solutions. You know, we'd like to have a lot, identify the parking and be able to work through that. It's just, you know, there's a lot of things at play at this point, so you have to be a little flexible, I guess.
Okay, great. And maybe for Sharice, a couple of questions for you or whomever from your team. I appreciate the three public restrooms, I just want to hear more about those because I'm so excited to see more than one. Could you just elaborate on those for us and I know that there'll be, what do you call, gender-neutral? Oh, I almost said unisex, but that's not correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Location and availability.
Right, okay, so I wish we had a diagram up showing the different placements of them. There is one directly around the play area, so it is completely public access, so there's no area that you need to walk through in order to utilize that section and it's over on the north side, middle of the building. And then there's one on the west side in the middle of the building. So in both corridors, vertical corridors, there is a public access directly to a gender-neutral bathroom, thank you. And then there's one after you walk into the restaurant that is around the front entrance. We designed it that way because I just think it would be a lot better than saying, oh, you have to go outside and then go around and, you know. It's, and one thing that I have a concern about is it being open at certain times. Right now, we do have an issue with people transients or people trying to find places to stay, so we definitely need to work out a good way for public to access it, but in a safe way and we're working on that.
So all three would be accessible without purchase or use of any facilities?
Correct.
Is that?
Correct.
Good.
And they would be handicap accessible.
Okay, great. Is this going to be a pet-friendly hotel?
I hope, yeah, oh, oh.
In other words, will you allow pets?
That...
Depends on the pet, right?
Should I go up to say that?
It doesn't matter to me, it's just a question.
Honestly, I love pets.
It's important to a lot of people. I just wondered if it's a pet-friendly...
At this stage, we haven't...
Sorry Travis Lee, we've definitely considered it, we haven't established whether or not we will fully go pet-friendly or not, but it's a great idea. And then I just wanted to further elaborate on the bathrooms a little bit. I took a walk around the Embarcadero, walked by the Smoogage Building?
Yes.
They have a sign posted on the door out there that says, "Open during business hours, inquire within for key" and that's kind of what we're thinking about, the green shaded area that you see along the outside there, just to keep that safety issue in play.
On the west side. I mean on the south side.
On the south side. And then one other note along those lines is, we're also with the LEED certification pursuing a, excuse me, why can't I think of the word, shower? For actually LEED credits there to add additional credits for our LEED certification, so it would benefit the employees of the property as well and, yeah, so.
Great, appreciate that, yeah. I'm intrigued by the, I mean, the GR, FRC, Glass Fiber Reinforced Concrete. I read through that, it seems to me to be really cool and so I just want you to elaborate on that, the size, the age range of kids. I see that it's non-toxic, safe, those kinds of things, but I'm just trying to understand more, I see the visual and I read the information, it's looking cool, but I'm trying to understand it, so.
Just the product of the octopus and the...
Yeah, I mean, what can kids do and what age groups might be able to utilize it and...
Okay, as far as the design, we want it to be something that's not toxic and that can also weather our environment. It's a really salty area, so we also want to have something that's going to be out there that's going to look nice for an extended period of time. As far as ages to benefit from the area, I want to, a lot of them are going to be very artistic with the mosaic and LED, so I think almost everybody's going to want to take a picture of them on that, so that's all ages.
So I'm just thinking of infants and possibility of falls and those kinds of things and signage for that, I'm just, that's really, I love the concept.
Okay.
The materials, but I'm wondering how small.
Well, due to the area that we can go up, they're all going to be 30 inches tall, so it's not going to be a far drop. But, if they do, if they, yes. Currently, we have concrete out there and a little kid rides and I, you know, I do not on the monthly or on the yearly see falls or hear of, heard, and we're right there, so I would know, but the times that I think that it's going to happen is so devastating to me that that is one of our priorities, is to make it a surface that's soft, so it's a safe place for them. I've contemplated all types of different ground covers and so when the time comes to actually picking one, I will do a lot of research into making sure that it doesn't smell like burnt tires and it doesn't smell like dog pee and it's going to be soft, but not too soft and it's not going to wear, so all of those things will be taken into consideration absolutely as far as safety.
Again, I like the concept and I'll mention that in my closing remarks, but I was just trying to figure out, you know, sizing and age groups and thinking about, you know, being in the medical field, falls and you've explained it well, thank you for that, I appreciate it. The public benefit items that you mentioned, the LEED certification, is that something you're absolutely going for?
Absolutely, in fact, Planning Commission requested that it be included as an absolute.
Great. And will all your rooms have ocean views or will there be a couple that don't, just out of curiosity? I was looking at the...
There will be, there will be one.
That will not?
That will not, it will be on the street side and it is also an adjoining possible room. We have designed it that the three rooms that are located on the street side have two possible spots where they can close off the doors so they can interact with one another and so all three can be one unit that's rented at a time, so even though they might be staying in the room without a view, they still have access to the other rooms. But yes, we ended up with just one room that doesn't have a...
Got it. My last question is, can you just, I'm sorry?
Travis, one...
For families.
For families or people who have friends that are traveling with them.
Could you expand on the ecology exhibits a little bit for us so I can understand it? Sounds cool, I just wonder what it's going to be.
This is Travis's wheelhouse.
So much more wheels. Well, you guys have seen the reverse periscope idea that was Sharice's concept and that's kind of...
What's that?
That's mine.
And then the other ecology exhibits was, talking about the viewfinder so that we can, you know, do some bird watching or whatever, anybody wants to view through the viewfinders and then also doing some historical placards and some ecology placards in and amongst the areas of the property along the water there as well as some, along the benches possibly around the play area, do some educational stuff there about the local ecology, local history and things of that sort. So in and amongst the entire property as well as some informational plaques about or kiosks about the LEED certification and just overall, you know, green building design.
Great.
Yeah, interactive.
Perfect.
I will add into that that there are quite a few ecological kiosks around Morro Bay. We don't want to duplicate any of them, so we go through, I mean, there's a multitude of things that I find exciting about our bay that I want to talk about, like that it's a volcanic plug and, but I think that somebody's always already covered that. But I also want to possibly have one that talks about the harbor department and how we as the businesses that are on the west side of the Embarcadero, give them money and that goes towards lots of things, but one of which is the health of the bay and so that might be one of, but we're still deciding and figuring out what ecological information is missing that isn't already present on the Embarcadero.
Great, I have three Sharice, two Travis, so you have one to go. Thanks, that's my last question.
All right, thanks. Hey Scott, I just, just a question for you as we go on, Matt, so just want to help us understand, so in concept approval, I know we're, some of the questions, this will come back for precise approval, precise plan, so Planning Commission will see this again and council will see this again as a precise plan, so in some of the, no, just the precise plan for...
So this will be the council's, you know, first and last look at the project. The only time it would come back to the council is if there were major changes made at Coastal Commission when they go get their coastal development permit that we, that staff felt was outside of the scope of the, you know, the direction given by the council this evening. That's not usually the case, I mean, we had one example of that in Mr. Fowler's lease site, but that's not normally, so in order, what would happen is you go concept to the Planning Commission, they make a recommendation onto the council, which is what you're seeing this evening, the council makes the decision, they go off to the Coastal Commission to get their coastal development permit and then we have the precise plan process which takes place in front of the Planning Commission and that's really meant to pick up whatever changes coastal, you know, made to the project and hopefully they're minor, so that's kind of how the process works, so you wouldn't expect the council to see it again, because I don't expect major changes.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Do you believe Scott, this is more directed to you and then Eric maybe, in terms of the harbor walk, the 10-foot setback including their tables, how is that, is that going to be appropriate, is that going to fit with the boatyard work that they're going to be doing on their harbor walk? I know with the harbor walk on, that they're going to be redoing that wall and then that's going to be coming into this 10-foot wall, a walk in front of this project, will that go ahead or will there be major issues with that?
It's all designed to connect together. The boatyard, of course, they've applied for building permits, so you'll see construction on that sooner, but it will all seamlessly connect and just a point of clarification, it's 10 feet plus the table, so there's total of 15.
Yes, they said 10 feet plus five.
Yeah.
And I guess one thing that, looking at the blueprints, knowing in terms of, although it was brought up, that there's not an eelgrass situation or concern right now, but when, will there be or how will that be addressed and will they be needing to drive additional pilings when they scrape that building and do extend that building?
Right, so they will be doing some pile driving activities, replacing some of the existing wood pilings there when they reconstruct that dock system and they are conditioned to be compliant with the California eelgrass mitigation policy, so that will require an eelgrass study 30 to 60 days prior to construction and that's to give us a baseline of what conditions are before disturbance. It's not likely that anything will come of that study either, just because there's not suitable habitat for eelgrass because the building currently encroaches over the bay, so, and then there's the dock.
And then also with the, the last thing I wanted to bring up is in terms of the boat slips, they have two in front of the property right now and then that will go along in with any sort of investigation for eelgrass and/or mitigation?
Right, yeah, so that's all part of the project.
Okay, thank you, that's all my questions.
Thanks Matt. Red?
I have a question for Sharice.
Hello, Councilmember Davis.
Are you willing to install a bike rack in the property?
Absolutely.
Whereabouts would you think you would put it?
I believe, I've thought about it, I've actually thought about having a vendor who rents bikes underneath the, around the stairwell of the south side. And also having bike racks there.
And if my colleagues agree, I would like to condition that as part of the approval when we get to that part. And... And can you describe the bar?
Okay. So the main area that is connecting the outside with the inside of the dining area is meant to try and keep it as open air as possible if it's nice weather. So wraparound bar is what we designed. Do we have a... If you look at the diagram where it shows the, in the orange, the public seating, the one that's to the north triangle, the bar will be over there. So it's an L-shaped bar. But, oh, I have a pointer, sorry. I've never, I've never used it. I don't know.
Don't change the channel.
That's a changer.
Oh, okay. That's a changer, it's not a pointer. Okay, so in there you see an L-shaped bar. The design is to have a rolling window that goes up, that goes up. And so if it's really nice weather, there will be an area to sit on the other side. That will be discussed with ABC and regulations to make sure that that's all conforming to their needs as far as alcohol being served on the premises. And, but for the most time, it will have a window that rolls down, so you can view through it and sit around that L-shaped bar.
And what kind of liquor will you serve? Will it be a full bar or just beer and wine?
That is going to be discussed during lease negotiations. It's, we, what?
It was.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's, it could go either way, beer, wine, or cocktails, full bar. From the things that I have looked into financially, as far as beer, the cost of beer and wine and the cost of alcohol, there is a much bigger margin for profit in alcohol. And so I think it would benefit whoever it is that is operating that part of the building to have hard alcohol. Is it necessary? I'm not, I'm not 100% on that at this time, if it's going to be full bar or if it's going to be beer and wine.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have.
Thanks, Sharice.
Thank you.
I think I just have questions. I have questions, maybe Chris and you might be able to answer this as I go through some of these, because I asked staff some questions and asked if they would kind of confer on this. But congratulations, anyway, getting to this point and getting to the concept. My original questions, when I met with staff today and looking at the plans, my question was, were the trash facilities that were enclosed adequate enough, understanding, not being an expert, but when you look at some of the other businesses on the waterfront and only having one area for trash container and understanding that other facilities need and require more, I just want to see if you can respond to that. And it just doesn't seem like that's enough, but I'd just like to hear what you might have to say.
Yeah, we've been tossing that around. Currently, it's designed or drawn in with a three-yard dumpster, though a four to six-yard dumpster will fit in that location. Looking at the properties to the south and looking at Google Earth, they seem like they're one and a half times our size, Rose's area. And they had three two-yard dumpsters is what they were utilizing, along with a two-yard recycle dumpster. So we have some flexibility there with the mechanical room to the north of the trash area. That is currently just housing a furnace, a mop sink, and the water heater, which that area, we could either, if we determine we need more space as we're going through the process, or if we can't get the size dumpster we need into there, we can either take some space from the kitchen prep area or slide the mechanical equipment more into the office space there and just have a deeper trash area.
So, thanks for that. So considering the LEED certification and then the trash, you know, so then there's the recycling component, right?
Correct.
So that's, you know, that would be a six-yard dumpster. So how do you integrate the recycling portion of that within that area, it seems rather...
With that six-yard dumpster, there'd be the option of having a divided dumpster, basically. Or that's where I think we would end up taking more space and adding additional dumpster in there for the recycling purpose.
Okay.
And then as far as location of trash cans around the property, I fear that'd be another one. When we dealt with House of Juju, I remember we were trying to keep them off the boardwalk area.
Yeah.
So I would presume we would locate them near the two exterior restrooms and then keep them within the courtyard area, because there will be the frozen yogurt facility, which will kind of produce quite a bit of, you know, waste there around the kids area. So we would have probably one or two along the south side in that corridor, but the majority would be up against the building in the courtyard area.
Okay. So just to talk about that specifically, that's another issue, you know, as far as managing the trash cans, especially in the waterfront, especially with our friendly seagulls.
Yes.
And just being able to manage that, you know, there are not any on the plan, so you're speaking that there would be some added?
Yeah, that's something, I looked back through when I was talking to Cindy. I think early on, on one of the other additions, we had trash cans located. And in kind of redesign of everything, they just didn't get put back in. Though they probably, at that time, were out on the boardwalk as well. But, and what we did on the projects, on the other projects, we proposed aluminum cans with the flaps, basically, with closures on them, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. And so having to discuss kind of a number of how many we would be, would be out there. I mean, it's interesting, as we get into these, sometimes we get into specific, hey, you have to have three of these or four of these and stuff like that. But, you know, we'll have that discussion with staff as well as we get into deliberations. And then my other question is, the outdoor seating on the harbor walk side for the, not the bar courtyard area, but...
Along the water side, yeah.
So, great, those are public seating areas, and what's proposed there is four. And I was looking at that from the plans that we have. And what often happens in, on the harbor walk areas are those seating areas expand into the walk itself. So when I was first looking at that, I was thinking, you know, those corner edges really tend to expand. And, you know, there's four seedings, and I was looking, well, three seedings should be adequate, and then you'd be able to soften the corners and allow for that 10-foot corridor. But if you, but in looking at the plans again, you have two seedings on each side and kind of an open access through the restaurant areas, that's what's happening?
Correct. And as Sharice mentioned, their intent with the food court idea is, there's really not assigned seating anyhow. So those four are shown as public seating, but they're not looking to restrict anybody from coming in and sitting in any of the iathers as well.
Yeah. And, you know, I appreciate that and understand that. I just, I understand, you know, from, you know, just kind of from the demand itself, a lot of times those areas naturally push out and then choke down the harbor walk area, which is one of the reasons and common discussions that we have in maintaining that.
Well, during the Planning Commission hearing, there was the discussion of a railing separating. But the concern with the railings, once you put a railing up, you don't really have access to those tables, because it, you don't have the room to get around the railings. So I think I presented at that point, and maybe in the conditions was possibly the grading, the grading for the deck would be a different color, kind of highlighting that area so that those tables aren't supposed to encroach into, just some other way of denoting that area so they don't go past that line versus having a pipe rail sticking up.
Okay, thanks for that. I think that's, I think that's all my questions at this point.
Thank you.
And I'll just revisit some of the things. Oh, the one other question I have, I didn't realize that until, you know, after reviewing the project and everything, I was more enamored with the project itself. And this might be a question for Sharice as well, but we have the harbor walk plaza, but then we have the harbor walk. And so it, marketing-wise, I guess that could be a good thing, but it does lend itself some, to me, when I looked at it, I was going, so what is what? And, you know, are we, as we continue on the harbor walk, do staff have any comments about, you know, the name of the area and how we are confused with what is designated the harbor walk versus a harbor walk plaza?
Sounds like a shrewd methodology for naming the project. I mean, so, I mean, we have identified the harbor walk and named it, and so we're putting that on the coastal access signage. You're aware of this.
Yeah.
And we also have identified the harbor walk and the public access improvements as part of the general planning coastal program update. We have a component of that that identifies, you know, what the materials that are supposed to be used and those types of things. I don't think there's a conflict between the two. I think it's acceptable, the project to have that name on it. We'll have access points pointing to go out to the harbor walk and, you know, having a name that's consistent with that's probably good for them.
And then my, my earlier question, Scott, today I was talking about, pardon me, the public benefits. And so there is the condition from Planning Commission about the public benefits being part of the condition. And though I see elements of the concept plan that are both intriguing and innovative, my question was whether or not they're sustainable and if so, if they're designated as public benefits. And after a couple of years, particularly the planters or things like that, and those things fall off, we're entering into this agreement with public benefits that, my question was, how do we, how do we uphold that? In other words, the public benefit isn't achievable, so we come back and ask for some other public benefit? Or at least, as I was thinking through, and I'm just speaking in general, but also specific to the planters on top, if they're not sustainable, if we ensure that they're not degrading both in appearance and we somehow are able to correct that?
I mean, I think some of that was the intent of listing them. So we are identifying what we're accepting as the public benefit component. I think you could either use the existing conditions that are in there that suggest that any change to those would either be a minor or major modification, and you have conditioning in here that reflects having to go through a process for that. You could be explicit and say, any changes to the public benefit components to the project need to be, you know, submitted for review by the community development director for determination as to whether they constitute a major or minor amendment to the project. If you want to be explicit, we have that language already in here for changes, though. And we have them, we have the public benefit components listed, so by reference, that information's all there. But understanding what your concern is, you could be even more explicit in that specific condition, and we could add that language directly into it. So there's, so it's clear that any changes require them to be submitted to us. Or if, say, it were to happen and we didn't realize it right away, but as we were going through a review of the lease every five years, like we're supposed to or whatnot, then we would realize, oh, changes have happened out there, and we need to have them come in and submit for a change, a minor modification or major, as it relates to the public benefit components, because it needs to be replaced or something like that.
Yeah, I guess I just want to make sure and understand and ensure that the public benefit portion of this for the project and everything is maintained, and there's language in there that covers that. Can you speak to that? Or do we, do we need to be more specific? And I'm somewhat cautious about that, but then I do want to make sure that we're doing...
It's whatever the comfort level is of the Council. I mean, we're, we have the pieces in the condition that identify what the public benefits are. And then we have the other conditions that are standard conditions in the document that say, if you're making changes to the project, it's either going to be, you know, major modifications go to the Planning Commission, minor modifications can be handled by the director. We can incorporate that specific language into that condition that speaks and itemizes the public benefits, if you want to make sure no one misses it. I think that we have the language in there that covers it, and as long as we're identifying and listing them, any changes to those or as a modification to the project, period, and we would treat them as such, just like we would treat a change to the building design as a minor or major modification. It's no different.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, in addition, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just, remember, this is, there's also going to be a lease. I think the details of how to maintain the, complying with conditions, be better taken as a landlord.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks, Joe, for that. And, sure, come on up. I think we're good on it?
To alleviate your concern, possibly, maybe take into consideration that we are also leaseholders as well as business operators on this property, and it behooves us to keep the property well-maintained. So any concern you may have with the viability of the rooftop garden, you know, looking vibrant, that's our ultimate goal, is to keep the property nice, so.
Cool. Thanks, Travis. And, okay, so with that, that concludes questions. At this point, I'll open up for public comment, and we don't have any speakers for this item, and nobody wants to speak to this item for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to Council for deliberation and discussion. So with that, we'll move on. Thanks. So, Marle, you want to start us off with discussion?
Sure. Well, I just want to thank you for all the hard work you put in on this project, and I'm really very excited about it. And I, I'm fully supportive of moving forward and approving it tonight with the conditions set by the Planning Commission, and I believe Cindy had another condition. And I think we still need to talk about whether or not we want the condition to include the LED certification. I don't know that we definitely...
I think that's in there.
Is that... There is a condition, it's already... That is one of the conditions of the condition 18.
I think the question is installing a bike rack.
Installing a bike rack.
So we have a condition to add, condition 21 from staff, and then whether or not we want to add a condition to add a bike rack.
Okay, yeah, which I could support.
Okay, all right, great. John?
Yeah, so thank you, Steph, for your report, very complete. And you guys have done a great job. I really like the project. I like everything you're doing. I like the concept. I like the look, the feel, the touch, the kid-friendly, the family-friendly, the expanded harbor walk, the whole concept, the eco, whatever you call it. See, what do we call it? Eco...
Friendly.
Eco-friendly. And so I don't know if this is a condition or not, but just the only issues I would add, I would also support the staff recommendation, along with the added condition by Coastal, I think you said. The following, just further vetting out of parking, which may happen at Coastal, I just think you need to look at that, guys, you're going to get hit there by it. So I know you know that, but it's just a concern. Being in the medical field, I heard you say that soft landing, kids fall. So I like that concept. I want it to be as safe as possible. I read your materials, they're great materials. I like the look. I just want to make sure if there are falls that there's a soft landing area. However, that gets into this whole concept, and I don't want to micromanage it. And other than that, I think it's great. So thanks for your presentation. Thanks for your time, and I'm supportive.
Thanks, John. Matt?
I too support this project as a COL. I think going forward, back in the day, from as this place has evolved from Bob's Seafood to what it is now, I think, given the harbor walk and these stairs, I really think you've addressed a lot of things, and I really appreciate staff work on this also. So I'm definitely in favor of it.
Okay, great. Red?
Sharice has done a great job already with that courtyard. That is just a great improvement and an attraction, and to me, that demonstrates wonderful, good faith for how she plans to, she and Travis plan to proceed with this project. So I know the mayor wants to say something about trash cans, and I would like to add a condition to require a six-to-eight-capacity public bike rack placed so as not to impede pedestrian flow. And that's all I have.
So that's it? Okay. So we're all in agreement? I'm in agreement as well with the concept plan as presented. I would, so we have a condition 21 that's recommended by staff that we are agreeing... I would, so we have a Condition 21 that's recommended by staff that we are agreeing to, and I guess we have to make sure we're all in agreement with that. We have a request to install a bike rack, six or eight, placed in a condition where it does not impede public pedestrian traffic. I could support that. Do we have support for that?
Yes.
And I guess I would just add that, I know you said six or eight, but if it impedes and they need a four or four, is that okay, or is it in general just not to impede?
Yeah, a four, four-to-eight.
Okay.
Capacity.
Okay. I totally, totally agree with that, and, okay, all right. So, and then we have the discussion on, and I'm going to look to you, Scott and Cindy, and though it's not on the plans, I just want to make sure that we have the correct conditions for trash cans, public trash cans on the courtyard and the outlying area. You know, we discussed projects in the past where we've actually had a number for those, and I just want to look for some guidance and make sure that it actually is part of the project, so whether or not it's conditioned or not, can you help us with that?
We can add a, yeah, sorry. We can add a condition that, as part of the precise plan submittal, that they identify the locations of the trash cans on sites, and that the trash cans be designed such that they have closing mechanisms, automatic closing mechanisms, so that birds can't get in there and pull stuff out.
Okay, so, a minimum number, three, four?
I would say minimum of three.
Minimum of three, okay. Okay. And then, so we have condition to add, add Condition 21, install a bike rack, four-to-eight, placed in a not-to-impose pedestrians, condition to add trash cans with closures, a minimum of three. Did we have anything else?
Yeah, soft landing area for the play...
And then, some soft landing material for the play area as, okay, soft landing material, we're all in agreement with that? Okay, some selected material, soft landing material?
There are standards to use, I just don't know what they are off the top of my head, and I'll identify those in the conditions, so they know what they're supposed to do.
Okay, and I think we're good. So we could make a motion that would include all the conditions that have been discussed, and I'll just repeat them one more time. Condition 21 is recommended by staff, install a bike rack, four-to-eight, placed in a position that does not impede pedestrian, trash can with enclosures, minimum of three, soft landing material for play area. And those are the conditions that we've discussed and agreed upon? And what?
Bike racks.
I did that. Bike racks, four-to-eight. Yeah. Okay, then I would take a motion to include those four conditions.
Salute.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr., or heading, a second by Ms. McPherson, that would include all four motions, or, excuse me, all four conditions as discussed and agreed upon by council? Okay? And do we need to repeat those any more times? We're all good? Mr. Panone?
We need to adopt the resolution, and the resolution is going to be changed to incorporate those conditions you just said.
And so, we're going to, the motion is to include, amend the motion to include adopting the Resolution Number 8218.
Yeah, that's, I'll make that motion, right, with the amendments.
Okay, and we need a second for the amendment?
Second.
Motion, Mr. Heading, second, Mr. Davis. So we have a motion to amend and a second on the amendment, and the motion, the amendment was to include adopting the Resolution Number 8218. So to repeat, we have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 8218, and the motion also includes the four conditions as discussed by council. Any further discussion? Clear? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Then motion carries 5-0.
One final comment, I just wanted to thank you guys for taking the interim lease on, really appreciate that, looking so much better. Thank you.
Thank you, and that would conclude this. Can we, are there any closing remarks on this, Marlese?
I just wondered if we need to approve extension of the short-term lease, or is that part of the resolution?
Joe?
Thank you for correcting that, yes, we need to do that.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so we do need to make a motion to...
I'll change my motion to add approval.
How about I just make another one?
Just make another motion.
I move we approve extension of the short-term lease agreement with TLC Family Enterprises for lease site 87-88, 87 West, 8-88 West, located at 833 in Barcadaro.
Second. Motion by Ms. McPherson, second by Mr. Davis, for the motion to extend the short-term lease. Any further discussing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Then motion carries 5-0. Are we good?
Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Where it says 87W and 88W, is the W for west, or is it for water?
Water.
Water.
Water. Okay. And any other closing comments? Thanks, Sharice and Travis and Chris, great job. And if we can conclude this, we could take a short recess, okay? All right, we'll be right back. All right, next up on the agenda, Item C1 is our first business item. This is Adopt Resolution Number 8418, establishing the City of Morbey's accounting and financial reporting policies related to financial management. This is unclaimed property, fraud, waste and abuse, disposal of surplus property and equipment, purchase orders, the water reclamation facility rate surcharge adjustment policy, and the proration of utility bills and notification to customers policy. That's a long subject for our staff report, but this is very exciting to have all these policies come to us, and looking for Jennifer, our finance director, Ms. Callaway, to present this to us.
I love that you chose the word exciting about policies.
Yeah, me too.
So, thank you for that. Well, our boss is bringing it back up, I guess he did. This is the set of financial and accounting policies that we promised you back in August. It's kind of the first attempt at starting these, there's many more that will be coming down the road. The resolution includes seven, that's why it was such a mouthful to say all of that with Resolution 8418, and we'll kind of go through them one by one, and if you have any questions at the end, we can talk about them individually. So this is an action item tonight, we're asking you to approve Resolution 8418, which would adopt all seven of these policies, and we would have these available for the auditors of you next week when we welcome them as guests to do our annual audit. So the first policy that you have is the financial management policy. This policy speaks to defining our basis of accounting, audits, budgets, reporting and record-keeping, financial account authorization, accounting systems, and cost allocation plans. Those are all kind of just basic statements for the city and the practices that we follow. This policy also addresses prepaid expenses, petty cash. You don't like this?
Thanks, Scott, that's helpful.
Good idea. Okay, let's try again. The second half of the policy...
Thank you, that's great.
...contains prepaid expenses, and those are expenses that we pay in advance of the preceding fiscal year and record them as assets on our books. Our petty cash policy establishes a threshold for how much departments are allowed to keep as petty cash on hand, what is reimbursable, it's generally $75 or less, for things like parking, if you go to a parking garage, or anything small of nature, and you have to have receipts for those. And then anything over $75 is required to have the city manager approval for that reimbursement to come out of petty cash versus our regular AP processing. And then it stipulates that the finance department will, at least annually, do a verification and accounting of the petty cash funds, usually before year-end, and our auditors arrive. If there's any issue with petty cash, we could do that more frequently if we needed to. Departments also have change drawers, those are to do just that, make change, it's not a reimbursement. We'll also annually be verifying and accounting the change drawers as well. Citywide, those don't exceed $800 on an individual basis, they don't exceed $400. That's the only one that is $400, is at City Hall, due to the large volume of receipts we have coming in with our utility bills. And then lastly, just defining that we deposit our receipts, our revenues, on the next business day, unless that's not possible due to a holiday closure or something of that nature, and then they'll be locked and stored in the safe at City Hall. So that's all of the items that are addressed in our financial management policy. Our next policy is unclaimed property. This is really speaking to cash or checks that have been held by the city and not claimed, perhaps an uncashed AP check or something of that nature. There's some requirements in the government code that are very specific, so the policy adheres to those. Basically, for checks that we've held in excess of three years, we have to do a notification process in the papers in order to give somebody ample time to come and receive and claim that check, there's a claim process, and then there's an accounting process on the books of how we would record that. There's sample attachments and documents included in the policy in terms of the public noticing, the claim form, if for some reason we were to reject the claim due to the person not providing sufficient identification or proof that it's theirs, there's a process in there for that as well. Anything that is under $15 or the depositor is unknown, and has been held by the city for over a year, does not have to go through that notification process, it can convert to the general fund automatically, and that's stipulated in the policy. One of the big policies that auditors look towards, and it is helpful to have acknowledgement from staff that they've reviewed and read the policy and are aware of the city's practices with respect to fraud, waste and abuse, there is an acknowledgement attached to the policy as it's proposed, it really speaks to the city's commitment to protecting its assets and the intent to investigate any suspected fraud, misappropriation, or irregularity or abuse that occurs. The city identified investigator, city attorney, and/or CJPIA, PIA, which is our California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, they have the responsibility to oversee the investigation or to deal with the investigation. We did add language in the policy to address confidentiality to the extent that we can. In some cases, it's not possible for a variety of reasons, but if we can, information won't be shared with anybody that doesn't need to have that information. Does give the city clerk as our HR director and the finance director authority to examine the records. From an HR perspective, makes sense. From a finance perspective, if we need to make any accounting adjustments on our books or know how much money is coming back, we need to have access to any information if it's related to finance as well. There's several options identified in the policy for who to report fraud to or abuse to if it's suspected, from the city clerk, HR analyst, finance director, city manager, city attorney, or chief of police, so hopefully of those seven options, they're comfortable reporting to somebody. We don't have a hotline identified, some cities do. One of the challenges with a hotline, once the number is out there, you may not get all the information you need, and you can't always follow up with somebody that reports. So, at this point, we don't have a hotline. If for some reason we think we need to have one down the road, we can add that in, and of course have whistleblower and retaliation protection, and the required employees to acknowledge that they've received the policy, read the policy, and understand the policy, and that will be retained in HR and the employee files that we have there. And the next policy is our disposal of surplus equipment and property policy. This really speaks only to what's defined as surplus property, it does not address real property, that goes under a separate process under the government code, so just want to be clear about that. This is connected to Item C3 that we'll hear later on, but it's establishing how we go about doing surplus property. We do have a code change to give some flexibility in allowing staff to proceed with the sale of equipment or tools rather quickly if we're deemed to be able to get a good price for that equipment, and wouldn't want to delay coming to council in advance of that and potentially lose the sale of that. So there's some prescribed information that has to be provided in order to deem property surplus. Anything that's $500 or less with respect to tools, equipment, furniture, fixtures, the department directors give an authority to sell or exchange that property. If there's no salvage value, they can dispose of that in any way they wish. And then lastly, we noted that management employees, department directors, any management-level employees are never eligible to purchase anything that's declared surplus, and that's just an added layer of protection for the city. The city could choose to auction the property or do an in-house sale, there's some prescribed language in there, if it's an in-house sale, to demonstrate that we're receiving the at-least blue book value or more for the property, that it has to be advertised in some way, and the department choosing to do that has to demonstrate that to the finance department before that can be sold. Next, we have our purchase order policy. This is the one I'm most excited about. We are using the purchase order system at this point for about a third of our departments, so we're still phasing it in, but it's working very well so far. And this policy kind of outlines the approval process that we go through and what we expect to upload and retain electronically with the purchase order to create that audit trail. So, the department originates a PO, the department director or his or her designee will sign off on it, it then goes to the deputy city clerk or city clerk for approval of insurance, that we have all of our required insurance documents. Those are scanned and uploaded into our finance system and attached right to the PO, which creates a nice audit trail. After approval for insurance, it comes into finance, and it's approved by our account clerk once a business tax has been paid by the vendor, so that's a way for us to make sure we're capturing all of our business tax with our vendors. And then, either myself or a budget manager will approve it to ensure that there's adequate budget, there's council authority either via the adopted budget or some other resolution. If it's a council staff report and resolution, we are uploading those to the POs as well, and any contracts that we have, we upload into our system. So it's one kind of comprehensive package attached to the PO, if there's ever any questions, we can just pull it into our system. So we're happy to have that going and using that, and it's working very well for us at this point, other than it does slow down the process a little bit, but in some cases, that's probably a good thing. So, two more policies left. We have our warf rate surcharge adjustment policy, this is the policy that we promised back in July, I believe, or June, where we recommended coming forward with an adjustment policy. The intent of this policy is to lower rates if we can, so we're proposing to come back, the public works director, city engineer, and the finance department will work on analyzing expenditures and revenues, come back when we do our annual fee update, which is about March each year, go through those with the council, any projects that were associated are expected to continue throughout the next year or throughout the next portion of the year, and make a recommendation. And that way, by the time we get into budget, our budget study sessions and working on developing budget, we'll have a recommendation from the council on the rates, they would go into effect in July. And again, the intent is to lower the rates beyond those of the maximum approved under Resolution 7118, which is our last 218 prop process resolution. You would never be able to raise rates above those unless there was another Prop 218 process, we want to be clear. Resolution 7118, which is our last 218 Prop process resolution. You would never be able to raise rates above those unless there was another Prop 218 process. We want to be clear about that. We also included language at the end of the policy that we'll review this annually, the policy itself and the process with the budget, since this is our first time doing it, to make sure that we're getting the information that we need, that council needs to make a good decision for that. And I wanted to point out, there's one typo or clarification in that policy on page 230 in your staff report in the fifth paragraph, the last sentence. We want to strike the word minimum amount of rate revenue and just say the 2018 Prop 218 approved WRF surcharge is intended to provide the amount of the rate revenue necessary to retire the debt.
Could you repeat the page 230 where?
Page 230, the last sentence of the fifth paragraph.
Okay, so it should say what?
Page 230?
Yes.
Okay.
230 of 246. The last sentence would read as the 2018 Prop 218 approved WRF surcharge rates are intended to provide the amount of rate revenue necessary to retire the debt that will be used in the finance, the construction of the WRF and ancillary facilities. So striking recently to clarify that it's the 2018 process and then striking the term minimum, just in case there's any confusion, we intended that to mean our rates will cover only what we need to, but there could be confusion as to the term minimum.
So last paragraph, line number?
Last sentence of the?
Right. Last sentence.
Under procedures?
Purpose?
Under purpose.
Under purpose?
Sorry, obviously, we're not getting it, so we're asking, yes, sorry.
Okay, page 230 of 246, WRF rate surcharge adjustment policy.
Right.
Under policy statement, the last paragraph under that section.
Okay.
The very last sentence of that paragraph.
Okay.
Would, I'll read it again.
Please.
The 2018 Proposition 218 approved WRF surcharge is intended to provide the amount of rate revenue necessary to retire the debt that will be used to finance the construction of the WRF and ancillary facilities.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. And again, that's just to make it clear that if minimum was confusing at all. And then the last policy that is included in this packet is our proration for utility bills and notification to customers. This is really to kind of align with what other utilities do for, it's really most common in rental situations and maybe the homeowners or the property owners that are renting it out as a tenant moves. It may go into the property owner's name for a few days and then into the new tenant's name. Under past practice, we wouldn't prorate that at all. The property owner would be responsible for one full month of the base water and sewer charge. So this is to provide an option to prorate or the ability to prorate. A minimum of $10 would always be charged. The customer would be charged for actual water used and then a prorated amount of the base water and sewer based on the number of days. If the account is active for eight days or more, the policy wouldn't apply. So that's kind of a very quick summary of all seven, but we can go through and answer questions on each of them if you'd like.
All right, Jen, thanks very much. And for that, we'll go into questions. I don't have any speaker slips for this item, but we will go through questions. And Red, do you want to start us off with questions?
Jennifer, on the purchase order policy where it says that finance is going to verify the valid business tax, is that the business license fee?
That's correct.
Okay. And then earlier in the year when we were working with the cannabis ordinance, there was a lot of talk about the cannabis industry dealing in cash only. Have we experienced that as we've gone through the application process or are they writing us checks?
We had one for sure, and I believe we had two that did pay their deposit in cash.
And that was $18,000?
That's correct.
Do we feel comfortable handling that amount of cash?
Comfortable handling, a check is preferred, of course. We can handle $18,000 in cash. We need to change our procedure for taking it down to the bank because it may be more secure. You know, we don't have an armored vehicle pick up our deposits, for example, but we could have an escort by the police department for large sums, and that's probably a good idea.
Would it be necessary to include that in your policies? Or is that just something that we know we should do?
I would look at that as a management practice.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Good questions, Red. Thanks, Matt. John?
Great, thank you, Jen. You've made my heart beat rapidly because I've been harping on this for a while. I'm not in discussion yet, but thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for the SOPs that you have addressed. Page 201, these are quick questions for you. My question on page 201 is, under reporting and record keeping, what about special projects like the WRF? Do they fall within quote-unquote "the quarterly basis reporting" indicating the status of the approved operating capital budgets? Or will you have a level where projects like that kind of capital project might come at other designated time or more quickly or more frequently?
So I view these as baseline. So at a minimum, you would get those kind of reports quarterly with the budget process. Anything above or beyond that would be, you know, of course, that council's direction or the city manager could direct that as a request for transparency.
Great, thank you. Page 204. Should say page five on the bottom? That's nothing really big. That's not really my question. My question is, where do credit cards fall within the policy? And will there be a credit card policy coming or should we add it to this section?
There'll be a separate credit card, travel, and general purchasing policy update.
Page 205. Under definitions in the middle, unclaimed money, if money, cash, or check. Unclaimed cash is an amount we're comfortable with or should there be a limit with regard to that?
The only limit to?
I'm not sure really what it is, I guess. When would we have cash that's unclaimed?
An Estelle, AP, or vendor check that was never cashed, for example?
A check?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's a possibility.
So not necessarily hundreds of dollars of bills? I mean?
Right. It's more likely going to be a check.
Great. Just wanted to clarify that. Page 207. Section four, unlimited checks of less than $15 that are more than 12 months old will be transferred to the general fund. Do we have large amounts of unclaimed checks? Just curious.
I think we had, we have about three of them that are past the three-year mark. I think we have about 10, or we have 50 that are currently unclaimed that total about $10,000, and they're dating back to 2013.
Okay, thank you. Page 218, fraud, waste, and abuse policy. In the medical industry, we have Medicare fraud and Medicaid fraud abuse policies, and we have a requirement to check an OIG standard database monthly for all employees that deal with any financial transactions involving those entities. Is there a like database for cities or city organizations, city-like organizations, public organizations?
Not that I'm aware of for finance professionals. I didn't see anything like that in any of the other fraud policies I looked at, so I presume not, but it could be something I'm not aware of.
Okay, I was just thinking, and if there were something like that, it would be nice to add it, but that's fine. With regard to background checks, I don't remember what our policy is for management and/or staff. Do we do significant background checks for, let's say, management level employees to determine that there aren't fraud-related issues prior to hire?
So I'll let Dana maybe speak to that. We do fingerprinting and credit checks, especially for finance professionals. Yep, I guess that's it.
Fingerprinting and?
Credit checks.
Credit checks.
Credit scores.
Okay. Should we add something with regard to a search for potential fraudulent past issues or as a preemptive strike?
If there was a conviction, that would show up on the live scan that's done.
Great, thank you. Page 231 is my last question. You'll be happy to know. And at least council will be, if I can get there. Thank you for that very important WRF rate surcharge adjustment policy. I just want to affirm you for doing that. My question is on page 231, under the policy. Can we adjust rates downward in between annual reviews if we determine that there's a significant reduction in costs associated with either the project and/or capital expenditures?
So again, I think this is the baseline or the minimum. If we were to be awarded SRF, for example, next month, we could open up the conversation about what that would do to rates.
Exactly, exactly my example, right. So how would that look and what would we do from a management standpoint to bring it to council?
Council could direct staff to do that. The city manager could initiate doing that on his own. The rates typically, though, don't go into effect until July 1st. So regardless of when maybe the action was taken, it would still be several months before they went into effect. But it would be helpful for the community to know and expect a decrease.
Great. Okay, thank you.
And I have one more edit if I can.
Oh, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. There's one other typo that I forgot to capture. I'm sorry.
It wasn't the resolution, was it?
There is a duplicate resolution. The one was the old reserve resolution, and that can be deleted. The resolution that's incorporating all of these is the one that's labeled 8418, and that begins on page 200. The other one that needed to be corrected is on page 203, prepaid expenses. We set the threshold at $1,000. There's reference to $500 in two places, so we just want to be consistent that it's a $1,000 threshold. Anything totaling over that would be recorded as a prepaid expense. Less than 1,000, we would not.
So that, I'm just following page 203 where it says, "Reporting and Oversight Prepaid Expenses," line three of that? Is that what you're talking about?
Yep, that's the second spot. The first spot is in the paragraph above that. It's the city's policy to amortize prepaid expenses totaling over 500. That should read 1,000.
1,000, okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Marlaus?
Thank you. And thank you, Jen. She was kind enough to meet with me this afternoon, and I had a number of questions that she answered, so I'm not going to repeat those except for just the one about where you, how you came up with these policies. I think it would be interesting for us all to know that.
So like we had done with the reserve policies, did a survey through our listserv and then asked other, our listserv being the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers, the member agencies, asked, for example, policies, kind of in general, accounting and financial policies, a few of the specific ones as well relating to fraud, waste, and abuse, and surplus property. Took all of the examples we got and kind of pieces of each one that we liked and worked best and then made them, you know, edited them to fit our needs and how it applies to us as a smaller city.
Thank you. And the only other question that I'm going to ask you really pertains to this unclaimed property and where the funds go back into. And I think that the language you use is that even if it came out of a special fund, the city council may transfer them to the general fund. And I just wanted to make sure that if something, for example, if it's a check that wasn't cashed and it came out of the water fund, that it would go back into the water fund, that we would make every effort, if we knew which fund it came out of, to put it back in that fund as opposed to putting it in the general fund. And you assured me that the language is sufficient.
It does say "may," and it has to be through if it, if, in your example, there was money from the water fund that was unclaimed, and there was some reason that you wanted to consider it not going to the water fund, again, knowing that, you know, that's an enterprise fund, so we can't use it for anything other than the enterprise. It would have to be by council resolution, and it would have to be legal that it could be transferred. So if it was, you know, a penalty or something of that nature.
But the intent is to put it in, as long as you would know, it would be to put it in the fund that it came out of?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Jen, I just have one question on page 201, page 246. And under accounts, it says RABO Bank accounts. When we get specific like that in documents, does it, then if we change banks, we've got to change the document, does it matter if it just says "bank accounts"? Do you have any comments on that?
We would have to change it if we did an RFP for banking services. That would come forward to council, and we'd bring the policy back at that time to adjust the language in here. We could be less specific and say, you know, the city's approved accounts based on competitive process. That would be fine, too.
Okay, so based on that, would it be preferable to do that last suggestion so we don't have to worry about a policy correction?
It's probably a good idea so we don't forget as a cleanup, should we want to change. I would think that's a good idea.
Okay. All right, we'll bring that back for discussion then. I don't have any more questions, and I'm looking for public comment in the audience and no speaker slips. So if there's no public comment, I will close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. And then I'll start with Red on the end and just go this way. Red, if you want to start us off?
I'm satisfied with the policies as written and as amended through the question by council.
Okay, great. Matt?
I too am satisfied with it, and I really appreciate the transparency and clarity for this whole process.
Thanks. John?
Yes, Ms. Callaway, thank you for addressing a long-term audit issue that I've been concerned about, and that is the lack of SOPs. You've done an excellent job in addressing a majority of them. I look forward to the remainder. Thank you so much for your diligence and for bringing them to us. And I too support the addition as well as the staff report recommendation.
Thanks. Marlaus?
Yes, and thank you, and I agree with my colleagues.
Okay, great. Marlaus, thank you. So as we go to entertain a motion to approve or adopt Resolution Number 8418, that would come with a caveat that with the amended changes. And Jen, could you just go through just one by one so we can repeat that and just confirm it, please?
Absolutely. So with respect to the financial management policies, on page 201 of the packet, we're going to strike RABO Bank and replace with city council approved accounts. On page 203, under prepaid expense, the third paragraph under that that begins with "it's the city," the $500 reference will be changed to 1,000. Under reporting and oversight of prepaid expenses, the last sentence, again, the $500 reference will be replaced with 1,000.
Okay.
Page 204, page four will be changed to page five.
And which one was that, please?
Page 204 of the packet. The individual policy page number is repetitive, so instead of page four, that's page five. And then under the WRF rate surcharge adjustment, under the policy statement, the last paragraph in that section, the last sentence of that paragraph will read, "The 2018 Proposition 218 WRF surcharge is intended to provide the amount of rate revenue necessary to retire the debt that will be used to finance the construction of the WRF and ancillary facilities." And I believe that's all of them.
Okay, great. So with that clarification on the amendments, I would take a motion to adopt Resolution Number 8418 with the amendment. Number 8418 with the amendments as stated by Ms. Callaway.
Second.
So we have a motion by--
I thought you moved.
No, I would say I would take a motion. All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Makawetzki and a second by Mr. Davis. I just was clarifying that. Sorry, Red. Yeah, okay. And any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Thanks for that. So motion by Mr. Makawetzki, second by Mr. Davis. And that concludes item C1. Moving on to item C2. Item C2 is 2018 City Goals and Objectives Status Update and Adopt Resolution Number 8318, establishing a community outreach process for reviewing city goals and objectives and rescinding Resolution Number 7215. Mr. Collins representing this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, Scott Collins, city manager, just going to give you a brief update of where we are in our status for 2018 Goals and Objectives and also discuss a recommended change to the strategic planning framework policy. So with regard to the goals and objectives, process and policy, overall, the five goals that council adopted a couple of years ago and then slightly refined this year, pretty straightforward around economic and fiscal sustainability, the work on the WRF project and One Water Plan, improving infrastructure and public spaces, reviewing and updating significant city land use plans, and improving communication engagement with the community. The goals process, as was established in the 2015 strategic planning framework, which is the first of its kind for the city and community, the intent was to establish goals, kind of your longer-term vision for the community every four years following a presidential election, and every two years you would review and approve objectives. The goals kind of being the hierarching, you know, 30,000-foot level, what do you want to achieve? The objectives, kind of more of the tactical, how you actually make that happen. So I think the city started with 10 goals and maybe 80 total objectives, and that's been pared down a bit to the five goals and about 30 action items, which were approved and prioritized for this calendar year. We've committed to bringing back regular updates to council on a quarterly basis, and council did finally adopt the goals and objectives in July, even though they were already in play in February, but we had a few revisions to those. So that kind of gives you a broad, a broad, very broad overview of our goals. The framework is included as Exhibit 8 to the resolution for people who are watching at home to kind of get more into the details of what that is and what that process looks like. We did note that there is kind of a slight hole in the framework itself, particularly around community engagement and outreach. I think it was assumed that that would take place, that the community would have a seat at the table, if you will, and provide input to the city council and staff regarding their priorities, and that that would be integrated into the development of goals and objectives. However, there's no stated component. And so we felt it was important to provide that and revise the planning document itself, the policy document itself, to include community outreach and really do encourage broad participation from our community. We do have pretty good participation, I'd say, but it's typically from the same individuals, and there's opportunities, I think, to get out and broaden that. The participation, I think that's a worthy goal in and of itself. Looking at what some of our neighbors do, like Pismo Beach and others, there are other opportunities that we can use to help broaden the participation, including surveys online or other formats, community forums, which we've had success with the WRF project, office hours, again, we've seen some success in reaching out to people who typically aren't involved, and then email portal so that folks can submit just their ideas over email. There's probably a variety of other methodologies to include broad participation, but those are the ones we see pretty standard, and we probably could make happen with a very few dollars spent, staff time, of course, but that's, again, a worthy venture, trying to encourage broad participation from our community. So that just is kind of the high level of what we're proposing in terms of the resolution modification. Is there any questions on that before we get into kind of the update on our progress towards the goals and objectives this year?
Any other questions?
Well, I actually asked Scott this this afternoon, but I just wanted to verify that you have suggested several different ways, and I just wanted to make sure that at this point you're open to any possible ways so that--
Absolutely.
--we don't need to memorialize simply these, but rather consider best practices and talk to others and see which ones seem to have been most successful at engaging the community.
Right. I think maybe the language could be used in that Exhibit to Say to Include But Not Limited To. So at least we have these as a minimum. I think these are achievable next year. Again, the intent is, I didn't explain this, the intent is that following the four-year goal setting after a presidential election and the two-year objective setting following a non-presidential November election, that you would have that broad community engagement. So basically, every two years you would do this, and I think as we go through this, we can see improvements, but we're totally open to ideas being used for next year. And ultimately, this is, again, to help guide council, make sure that the community's involved in the process.
Okay, all right. John, questions? Okay. Any questions?
Keep going.
Okay. Yep.
All right. So I apologize in advance for the font size here. This first slide of our update is the items that are either entirely complete or largely complete. A lot of these are repeats from the July update. Bounce budget, marijuana taxes on the ballot for 2019 November election. We have the MOU with the chamber for implementation of our economic development plan, at least components of that. The Community Choice Energy Feasibility Study is done, and we've taken further steps, including approval of the JPA agreement, and tonight the adoption of the ordinance that creates the CCE. There it goes. WRF budget has been created since the July update. Council has certified the final EIR for the WRF project. Council has also adopted the WRF surcharge following the completion of the 218 process. In addition, the city submitted its application for the WIFIA and is in kind of the final stages of submitting the application for the state revolving fund low-interest loan. Those are only able to be completed because we did the WRF sewer rate study for the WRF. Council's updated the utility discount program a couple of times this year and has moved from a kind of a one-time sign-up into a revolving sign-up to help encourage as much participation in the program as possible. We hired the new WRF program manager. The Adopt a Thing program is up and running, and we're continually working to improve kind of our outreach, but also in terms of how we communicate our efforts towards achieving the goals that the city council's adopted. So those are kind of the ones that we've checked the boxes off, and we're moving on to the next set of items, which we have made significant progress, but work still remains. One of the chief goals for city councils is the financial sustainability. There's two sides to that. There's the revenue, and then there's also the expenditure side, understanding we may have more control on the expenses. You know, council made it a goal to have a cost control reduction plan in place. We approved a bounce, or council approved a bounce budget for fiscal year 1819. Good progress was made to reduce our overhead, to flatten the organization a bit, and we intend to take that a little bit further with more initiatives, working with our employee budget group and the community and council to further that plan. And it also rolls into the fiscal emergency plan, as well as the financial policies that you're taking kind of bit by bit due to the good work of the finance director and her team. Offshore wind farm opportunity, we obviously heard an update from the Subcommittee of Council Member Heading and Mayor Irons. We're reaching a pretty critical point in that. Harbor lease management plan, you did hear kind of the broad overview, what that would look like. I think work is moving towards creating kind of the stakeholder process and finding a facilitator to oversee that. Council's reviewed the tourism department division, I would say, and pretty thoroughly. However, there are pieces that remain, including what to do for vacation rentals in terms of paying into the T-bid. And so there's more to come, probably next year, early next year on that. The One Water Plan was brought forward tonight. As you heard, it'll probably be completed later this year. General plan and local coastal plan and zoning update will be a 2019 adventure. We continue to work on improving the website. The marijuana ordinance has been approved, and we're now in the application review process. We have a fee study underway for other revenue options. We're working towards acquisition of the WRF site, the South Bay preferred site. The design-build contract will be coming to council shortly, and you also did approve the feasibility study for the Bow Yard RFQ financial study. So again, a lot of good work has been done this year. It's, those are, between that last page and this page, I count almost over 24 or five action items that have either been completely achieved or very close to moving into that box. And then we have last, the items that are probably all going to be 2019 items. It doesn't say that under council action, so I apologize, but those are things like parking and wayfinding, very important, the Memorial Bay Aquarium site, homeless issues, the acquisition that was on the last one, and kind of seeing what we can do to improve our outreach efforts and then the important partnership policy. All those things will kind of come forward in 2019. But I would say the city council's made significant progress towards achieving the objectives that they set forward this calendar year. With that in mind, the recommendation is to adopt Resolution 8318 and rescind 7215, amending the strategic planning framework policy to include community outreach. Thank you.
Okay. All right, with that, any questions for staff? Red, Matt, John, Marlaus? None? Okay. We'll open up for public comment. I don't have any speaker slips for this item. See, no public comment. I'll close public comment and bring it back for discussion. Red, comments?
I accept the goals progress sheets, and I understand that some of these goals continue to be worked on, but fabulous job getting done what we've done this year. You know, when you see this huge list of things that we have accomplished, very proud of you, Scott, and your staff. Yeah. So, and I agree with the process that the city manager is proposing for the community outreach process, so I would, I would be, I'd be open to adopting the Resolution 8318.
Okay, thanks, Red. Matt?
I too appreciate the community outreach aspect of it and then the work that Scott and staff have really done as you celebrate your first year, so, all right. Wow. And so going forward, the clarity that this brings, I think it really just opens up possibilities to see what's going on and then go forward, so I'm in support of it.
Okay, thanks. John?
Scott, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your tenacity, and when you see it on paper and you really realize the monumental amount of work that's been achieved in a short time, especially given the fact that it takes you six months to even know what's going on when you're new, my thanks to you and your staff for a great job on this. I'll just make one comment on the public outreach portion of it. I agree with Marlaus. If there are new innovative ways to find public input, last time we had our goal session, you know, we had a handful of people, unfortunately, and there've got to be other ways to reach the community to get a broader input. And I would just say, continue to look for best practices, innovative new ways to gain that input and not limit yourself to just what we have in the policy. So thank you.
Well, again, congratulations on a job well done. You really have worked hard this year, and we all appreciate it. And I, I'm going to recommend a change to what you have to say in the process, the community engagement. This is in red on your page 240 of 246. This is, "In years following an election in January through mid-February, staff will provide numerous opportunities for the community to engage in the process," and then you very specifically say, "by providing input, et cetera." And I'm, my suggestion is we scratch that and say, "and to provide input in a variety of ways," just not to limit ourselves to those specific methods.
So, Marlaus, just to be clear, by striking "by providing input via online survey and email portal," really, I mean, it would be, basically, you're just saying, "and to provide input in a variety of ways." So that would also strike email portal?
Yes, yes, and community. Yeah, just, we're going to let you really look to see what seems to be successful in other communities and to make a proposal to us for how we're going to engage the community, to provide input in a variety of ways. So not just one way, but multiple ways. You're shaking your head, so I think it's okay with you.
It's really what's okay with you.
Yes, I know. Well, we're going to find out in a minute here if my colleagues agree.
Okay. All right. And good with comments? Okay. Marlaus, I could agree with your comments. I do, I would include that the variety of ways includes some community forum as part of that, so a variety of ways, and I would want to ensure that that's kind of a kickoff part of community workshops, and I think, you know, I speak to that only because that was the start of the four-year process, so wanted to, you know, ensure that, you know, there was a community forum as part of that and in addition a variety of ways, so I would just, you know, ask to include that. And then if that's agreeable with council as well, Marlaus, but I would just like to comment that appreciate bringing back this document. We, I think it's been a great guideline for council, and it's not, when we first developed this, this is really key for every council to come forward. And basically, as we're talking about this, this will be coming forward come January, and so it's pivotal that we're able to have this. And, you know, I could speak to, you know, six years ago, of course, I, you know, I think about that, but we didn't have these kind of guidelines, and I just think it's, I really, really appreciate having this guidance and this policy that sets the framework for. So I, the additional language in approving the resolution that would be revising this as recommended by you and staff and with the additional language I would agree upon, and would also like to say thank you for all your work on achieving the community goals that have been set out, as well as all of staff, because I know that's you, Scott, but it comes with all our staff and the employees that are doing that. So just have to give a shout out to everybody involved in that as well. It's been, there's been a lot of work, and I know staff has been working hard, and I, you know, I know we got through the Prop 218 process, but that was really consuming a lot of us. And in addition to that, there was all this other work that we did, as well as these great policies, financial policies, Jen, and everything else, so just want to say thanks. I will speak to the one item that, you know, of course, continues to be the one item that was near and dear to me, and that was the general plan, local coastal plan. We do have a resolution that states that we were going to have that adopted on a specific month, and-- month, and have talked with the city manager and then Scott Graham about bringing another resolution back. I don't want to ignore that. It basically states that, you know, we were going to have it done, and so perhaps refreshing a resolution that identifies how we're going to get that completed. And I've already had conversations with Scott Graham, as well as our city managers, on how we would do that and would want to be doing that. So with that, I just thanks again for everything, and unless there's any other comments--
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We need to make an amendment to, or in addition to Resolution 8318 on page 238. Sorry for not catching this earlier, and thank you, Dana, for catching it.
238.
In the title, after the word "policy," we need to say, "and rescinding Resolution 7215," and then in the paragraph that says, "now therefore be it resolved," at the end of that paragraph, add, "and rescinding Resolution 7215."
Okay. So the resolution that we have on page 238 in the title has to have those corrections, and under the "now therefore be it resolved" has to have that--
Correct.
--in it. Okay. So then, we would be adopting Resolution Number 8318 as amended--
By what I just said.
By staff's recommendation of changes. So let's start with that first. So we're going to adopt, need a motion to approve and adopt Resolution Number 8318 with the amended corrections as stated by City Attorney Benoni.
So moved. Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Heading, second by Mr. Davis. Seeing none other conversations on that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, so, and that was, and I just want to be clear that in this resolution, it approved the policy language on page 240 with the language that was discussed with Ms. McPherson and myself, but it basically says, "and to provide input in a variety of ways," and the community forums as part of that. Okay. All right, so we're clear on that. Is there any other further discussion? Or we're clear? Okay. With that, we can, unless there's any other further discussion, we'll conclude this item and move on to the next one. Okay? All right. That concludes that Item C2. We'll move on to Item C3. Item C3, this is introduction and first reading of Ordinance Number 617, amending Section 3.08.130 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code relating to authority to sell surplus supplies and equipment and approval of sale of surplus water department vehicle. Ms. Callaway?
Thank you. There's two action items with this, with this staff report, the first being to, the first reading of Ordinance Number 617, amending Section 3.08.130 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code relating to the authority to sell surplus supplies and equipment. Staff's proposing a modification to the current code language. We determined, our utilities managers found a buyer for our old back truck, and in the course of completing a contract and, or starting a contract and working through that process, realized that there wasn't a surplus property policy in place with the city. We did just adopt one, so that will be helpful in the future. And we've also proposed amendments to the code that would allow the Finance Director to authorize sale of surplus equipment if the equipment is, you know, deemed to be either unsafe, or it's more costly to repair, or it's not going to meet the city's needs. So the amendments are provided, they're whited out in the new ordinance that's proposed or struck out, and the new language is provided as an underline, and that's on page 245. Secondly, we're asking that the council approve sale of the old back truck under separate agreement. That's because if you approve the ordinance change, it wouldn't go into effect until 60 days after the second reading. Alternatively, you could choose not to amend the ordinance and approve the sale of the old back truck, or you could choose not to approve either. The negotiations for the sale of the back truck and utility managers here, he could probably speak to it more, is at a value that we can demonstrate is above that from other, you know, eBay or other kind of mechanisms for sale at $30,000. So we didn't want to risk losing that option by having to wait 60 days after the second reading, and that's why we're asking you to approve the sale kind of separately from the ordinance change.
Questions for staff? Anybody? None? I'll open it for public comment. Anybody for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back for discussion. You want to start us off, Marlis, for discussion?
Well, I think we should just agree with our Finance Director here. It seems logical, and I think it's good that we caught this, that we don't have a policy, and now we will have one, so, and I think you've found a good buyer for the truck, so I say, let's go.
Okay, thanks, Marlis. John?
Ditto.
Okay. Matt?
Did you agree?
I agree.
Okay. I agree as well. Jen, thanks for bringing this forward, and Joe, thanks. With that, we take a motion to, for the introduction and first reading of Ordinance Number 617, amending Section 3.08.130 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code relating to authority to sell surplus vehicles and equipment and approval of sale of surplus water department vehicle.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Heading, second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. Okay. That concludes all our business items. Moving on to future gen items. Any future gen items? Seeing none. We didn't bring this up at the beginning of the meeting, but Scott, it's one year ago today, we were celebrating something as far as, I think it was this public meeting where we were agreeing to your contract, I guess, at this, a year ago to this meeting, so just want to say, congratulations. Really pleased to have you, and, you know, I think, you know, basically from our comments and goals, everybody's just very, very pleased, and just, thanks, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Yeah.
Any other?
Get used to it. It's going to go just as fast next year.
All right. With that, our next regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 23, 2018, at 6:00 PM at the Veterans Memorial Hall, right here at 209 Surf Street, and we can adjourn the meeting. Thank you.